It being one o'clock, I am going to call to order the County of Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, October 23rd, 2017. We will begin today with the flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes, nicely done. We're going to move now to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved on a single roll call vote, although anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action and any item may be moved for discussion. Are there any consent items that anyone on the board wishes to pull? Anyone in the audience wish to pull anything from consent? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion in a second, this is a roll call. Duran?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler? Montgomery? Yes, thank you very much. We're going to move now to public comment. This is the time where anyone may address the board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. However, if all comments cannot be heard within a 15-minute time limit, public comment will be taken up again at the end of regular session. Please also understand that the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on any agenda item not on today's agenda? Or any item not on today's agenda? Please come forward and identify yourself. Your name and, yes, right up here please. If you would give us your name and tell us generally where you live.
Good afternoon, my name is Patty McNamara. I live on the west shore in Tahoe City by Grandly Bakken. And I'm here today, I've been reading a lot about the TOT taxes and the Airbnbs and all the extra tax money that you're getting for our county, which is wonderful. But my main concern is, what about the constituents here that have to live with all these vacation rentals on their, on their streets and in their neighborhoods? I live on a very small street near Grandly Bakken Road. There are nine Verbos, Airbnbs, and vacation rentals. And it's just a madhouse, summer and winter. Parties, Jennifer and I have talked about this, and I just wonder, is there anything that's ever going to be done about getting permits for these homes to run these hotels in our residential areas? What can I do? What can you do? What's being done?
So, we aren't really allowed to respond under public comment, but what I would suggest is reach out to Lindsay, who's my new district aide. She replaced Steve Caston. And we'll set an appointment and work with some staff from, with CEO to let you know what we are doing and what steps we're hopefully moving toward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, wow, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring this to the board for Board Member and County Executive Reports. I'll start with our CEO. Do you have anything today?
Nothing today.
Any Board Member have any reports? Okay, the only thing that I would like to mention is that I was notified late last week that Vicky Ramsey from our Environmental Health Department is retiring after 27 years with the county. She's been a terrific employee and she has, she actually started in our land use and water program in 1990. And she has always made it her mission to make sure that people had safe and reliable drinking water, which luckily up here in Tahoe, we, you know, with our PUD partners, we have a pretty good, pretty good grasp on, but there have always been issues with some of the smaller water districts. So, just please join me in wishing Vicky all the best on her retirement. And I'm not sure if we're going to have some sort of party, but we will let you know. So that is it for Board Member Reports. It not yet being 1:15, which is our first timed item, we will start with department items. We're going to go to Agenda Item 5. This is the Board of Supervisors Minutes. We're being asked to approve the minutes of September 19, 2017. Supervisor Weigant was absent. What's the pleasure of the board? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Thank you. We will move now to County Executive Item, Agenda Item 6, County Executive Item, Environmental Planning and Public Outreach for North Lake Tahoe Area Use Agreement with the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation. Erin Casey will be presenting this. Welcome Erin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Erin Casey with the County Executive Office. I'm here today to present to your board a contract between Placer County and the Squaw Valley Ski Museum for Phase 3 of their project. I'll go through this in detail, including some of the history on this project and some additional or previous grant funds that your board has awarded to the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation for this project. So in 2008, your board awarded $12,000 in transient occupancy tax funds, or TOT funds, to support the creation of the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation as a 501(c)(3) corporation and for them to begin developing a business plan so that they could really develop the concept of the museum, what it would include, and what services it would provide in our community. In 2008 and 2009, Phases 2A and 2B were also awarded funding, $200,000 in TOT support. Those were actually broken out into two separate phases so that the organization could complete work in Phase 2A. And at this time, remember, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association was participating in reviewing and vetting projects and recommending those projects. And one of the recommendations they made to your board was that you consider splitting these two funds up into two separate installments so that the organization could be sure that the Squaw Valley Ski Museum was in fact meeting their expectations or what was outlined in the grant applications for deliverables. So what was included in those two phases was the development of a museum master plan and the continuation of that business plan, the site evaluation, and then fundraising and public outreach on the project itself. So now what we're here for today is our funds for Phase 3. Your board in February of this year approved TOT funds with the following two contingencies, and just to back up, it was $125,000 in TOT funds. And this was per recommendation of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association's board. The two contingencies associated with this were to complete an agreed-upon procedures financial review of TOT expenditures from 2000, or excuse me, from Phases 1, 2A, and 2B. And that contingency was met. They did in fact engage a third-party firm and completed that financial review. And that review met our expectations and satisfied their requirements. The second contingency though was that the US Forest Service would make a determination that the museum was not in violation with a current deed restriction that's placed on their preferred site in Squaw Valley Park. So the deed restriction states that that park is used for recreational use, and there was not certainty as to whether or not the Forest Service agreed that the museum itself did not violate that. So the US Forest Service responded to the county, and no determination at this point was made. I included the most recent letter in your board packet, so hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. They urged the county to manage the property consistent with that deed restriction and were primarily concerned with commercial use, or what they would consider to be commercial use. Some components of the project that they were concerned with included the entry fees that might be charged, rental fees that might be charged for use of that facility, but felt that they needed more information about the project before they could really make any determination, and requested that your board really consider some of those things as you learn more about the project to determine whether or not you think it's in violation of that restriction. So additionally, the fourth bullet point there is that the TOT funds that are before you today in that contract would actually support additional planning. So the organization would be able to complete their environmental questionnaire that would be submitted to our Community Development Resource Agency. And that would include additional detail on what that project, what would be entailed in that project. So would there be rentals associated? Would they do weddings? Things along those lines? As well as the structure itself and the services that it would provide. So it's difficult at this point to make a determination of whether or not the project is in violation of that deed restriction without this detail. And so these funds will actually allow the organization to do that additional planning work so that your board has a better understanding of what the project actually is, and then can weigh that against the deed restriction for Squaw Valley Park. So just a little bit more detail on the contract. This is a transient occupancy tax, or TOT-funded contract. This would be a contract between Placer County and the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation for a total of up to $125,000. The contract term would be starting today, October 23rd, 2017, through June 30th of 2018. And more specifically, the services included in this would be the completion of the environmental questionnaire to our Community Development Resource Agency, architectural design, and planning for museum displays. Additionally, community outreach would be included in this contract, or is included in this contract. Just to note the match, the total project cost for this is $288,068 for Phase 3. The Squaw Valley Ski Museum has provided $163,068 in matching funds. This is a 57% match, which is pretty significant compared to some of our other projects that also have matching funds, but typically not at this level. This match will be a cash-only, which is consistent with the grant application that they provided to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. And the museum foundation will be expected to document that match with each invoice as is consistent with our other contracts for capital projects that are funded with TOT. And with that, I will conclude and receive any questions or that your board may have.
All right, I will start with the board and see if there's any Board Member with any questions. Anybody down on this end? No, down here? Okay. Seeing none from the board, I will open it up for public comment at this time for any comment or questions. Welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon. I'm David Antonucci. I'm the President of the Board of Directors of the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation. We have a brief statement we'd like to give you. First of all, we've reviewed Erin's report and we find it accurate and complete, and agree with the recommendation, and urge you to follow through on that recommendation. I'd also like to talk a little bit, just briefly, about the project. This is a project that's long overdue. There's two things that happened in Placer County's history that changed the course of the county. One was the gold rush, the other was the Winter Olympics in 1960. There's no museum that commemorates that event that really put Placer County on the map among winter sports areas, and has to this day contributed significantly to the economy of Placer County. What we hope to do is build about a 14,000-square-foot, two-story museum in the middle of the parking lot at Squaw Valley Park. This is going to have artifacts and memorabilia. We'll curate and display it, have exhibits. It'll be, there will be a multipurpose community meeting room in the building that will be available for use by outside groups. We'll have a theater to show ski movies. We'll have a small café where you can get something to eat, possibly a visitor kiosk. And most importantly, for the mothers that bring their kids to the tot lot at the park, is we're going to have heated restrooms with flush toilets. Now, if you have a little kid, you know little kids don't like to use pit toilets because they're afraid they're going to fall in. And so we're going to provide a restroom facility that will be open to the public and will be a clean and inviting place for kids to go and their moms and that, and I think that's pretty important. Our preliminary analysis shows we're not going to have any effect on traffic circulation or parking at the park. So we feel pretty confident our project is conceived in a way that's consistent with uses in the park. What I'd like to do now is bring up a few comments that I think you're going to hear from the opponents who might be in the room today, and I'd like to respond to them now. The first thing you're going to hear is the deed restriction on the property prohibits the use of the park by a museum, and that is not true. We have information that was provided to us by your County Council that made the finding that the use of the park by the museum will not in any way conflict with the deed restrictions that were put on the property by the Forest Service as a condition of the transfer. I have copies of the opinion, I'd like to approach the table. What your County Council said, and I'll just read the last statement, "In sum, the county has determined that as proposed, the museum would be ancillary to the primary park use and consistent with the deed restriction." Second thing you're likely to hear is that violating the deed restriction will cause the Forest Service to want to repossess the property. But the premise of that argument is that the museum would violate the deed restriction. Your own County Council has already said that the museum would not violate the deed restriction. So even if the Forest Service in the remote chance considered repossessing the property, they wouldn't want it anyway. They don't want soccer fields, they don't want tot lots, they don't want small pieces of property surrounded by, as islands of land in public land. Another thing you're likely to hear is that the museum will interfere with other future park uses, and that is not true either. We're in a spot in the park that has very limited other uses, and there are plenty of other areas in the park where other types of park facilities can be built. There isn't much else that can happen there. The opponents are now circulating a survey that calls for...
You're going to need to wrap up quickly. You have three minutes and they've expired.
Yeah, okay. Calls for the construct, to determine whether people would want to just construct a recreation center or a pool, neither of which is feasible at that site. The last thing, and I'll wrap up, is you might hear that other sites are available, and that is not true either. We did an extensive survey in 2008 and '09. This was the only site that works for us. It's the only site where we feel we can raise money, and it's the only site that's on neutral ground that other ski areas will respect and will eventually participate in the construction of the museum. So with that, I'll conclude and recommend that you adopt the recommendation of your staff and all. Any questions, I'm here.
I see no questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Sorry for my phone. My name is David Steppner, and I'm a resident of Squaw Valley. As a member of the Squaw Valley MAC, I am neither a proponent nor opponent of the proposed museum project. I'm here because our community is once again at loggerheads over this issue, as it has been for the past several years over the village project. While I know that Supervisor Euler considers Squaw as squabble valley, and therefore the situation is status quo, I am here to ask your help in the art of compromise. On October 4th, I met with both sides of the museum controversy to propose a compromise, to place the museum in the western portion of Squaw Valley Park, just to the west of the PSD building behind the bus shelter, rather than in the middle of the eastern portion. Such a site satisfies neither party. The proponents want it closer to 89, though I do not believe that even there it would be seen from 89. And the opponents don't want it anywhere in the park, which in their minds was meant strictly for recreation. The proposed deal was that if the proponents agrees to move the museum location to the west portion of the park, the opposition would stop. There might be an advantage to the county in this compromise. Since this parcel, the western parcel, is isolated, it is possible that the US Forest Service might drop the deed restriction for that part of the park. I think that such a deal could be, if it could be struck, would be significant benefit to the county in view of the fact that the Forest Service really didn't say one way or the other whether the museum operation would be in violation of the deed restriction or not. The consequence of them determining at some later date in response to some complaint that the operation would be in violation could be severe. The Agenda Item is to approve the $125,000 TOT grant to the museum foundation. According to Erin's October memo, the $125,000 is to be used for completion of the environmental questionnaire, architectural design, planning for museum displays, and community outreach. The two sides said they wanted one month from October 5th to evaluate the compromise idea, but I, so I have no update for you on that. While my hope would be that they would accept a compromise, I believe both sides need a push. Namely, that the western park location be analyzed for feasibility and the report provided to the county staff with hard data as a condition of the $125,000 TOT grant. Thank you.
Any, one question, just for clarification. When you say the western end of the park, you're suggesting the bit that is right there where you would go left into the resort at Squaw Creek?
Correct. So it's right by that Y in the road, yes. So the, if you look to the left and the, there's a tree area there behind the bus stop, that's actually part of the park.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from any Board Member? Okay, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Lynn Gibson. I'm a full-time resident of Squaw Valley, a business owner in Squaw Valley and a part-time resident of North Lake Tahoe for over 35 years. Approximately three months ago, I did join the board of the Squaw Valley Olympic Museum Foundation because I believe wholeheartedly that the mission, use, and purpose of this organization to deliver a full-time, multi-use Olympic Heritage Museum is critical for this region. In speaking to some of the details that have been addressed today, I want to voice my support that this is a local, regional, and international-level, multi-level sports and recreation connector. I think it is very suitable and consistent with the park uses. It is synergistic with the NLTRA and other area ski clubs who would very much like to partner with us in the operation of this facility and spreading of the benefits of all the ski programs in this area and Olympic heritage. We will also be in association with the US Ski Team Foundation, of which I'm very active through our professional photography business and the athletes. It is also a multi-level cultural heritage and sports interpretive center, which is very much needed, and will represent the entire Lake Tahoe or Tahoe Reno area should the Olympics, hopefully the Olympics come back. I do wholeheartedly support, I have a 25-year background in commercial real estate, that the eastern and currently proposed location of the park is the most suitable location for this building. From access, I do believe visibility to some degree is critical to the intersection of 89 and Squaw Valley Road. We do not need to force any additional traffic farther up Squaw Valley Road, given the bottlenecks at the intersection, but would be easily suited to the existing park egress and its connection to the Olympic Tower. This use will greatly, the foundation organization will ensure that all the uses of the building fit well within the use guidelines and use restrictions of this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? If so, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Kirsten Seaworth, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of my mother Marilyn Seaworth. I happen to be a 32-year full-time resident in Squaw Valley. Ladies and gentlemen, I realize that today's meeting is not about the merits and impacts of a proposed museum in the Squaw Valley area. However, there has been substantial discussion about its local, I'm sorry, its location in the Squaw Valley Park. The deed restrictions for the land transfer of the park from the Forest Service to Placer County specify that the use be for recreational use only. During the summer, I have had many opportunities to talk with local people as well as many tourists. When it was explained to them that a large building was being proposed for an entrance, for the entrance and middle of the park, they were amazed that it could be considered in that location. The park is fully used in the summer for active recreation activities, and all agreed there is no room for a large building such as the museum people are proposing. The Board of Supervisors can specify funds for whatever they think is necessary. However, since there is quite a popular vote against this location of their building, the museum group should be forced to look into other locations. Further, if they persist in only considering the park location, they should be required to do an environmental impact study. The EIR is needed since so many people of various ages and activities use the park at the present time. The deed restrictions must be considered. Commercial use is not allowed. If money is taken in for services, that is commercial use, no matter how one plays with the semantics. It is known the museum group wants to rent rooms, have a restaurant, and gift store, all commercial. Please adhere to the deed restrictions for the Squaw Valley Park and allow the people of the community and visitors to continue the luxury of a public park. Thank you, Marilyn Seaworth.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Please come forward. Welcome.
Hi, and thanks for the opportunity to comment. I'm Ed Hennebel, the 20, I don't even know, longtime resident. Again, I prefaced these comments by saying I'm really not opposed to the museum. I think it has merit, but the location is wrong. And I know we're not discussing that so much here, but as we talk about this, I would like to comment on three things. The responsible use of public funds, the risk that you're taking, and finally, the location is the bottom-line concern. The staff report is disingenuous when it states, quote, "No net cost to the county general fund." While that might be technically true, there's already been spent, over the last 10 years, $212,000 of public TOT money. That's our public funds as well. As well as countless staff hours that might add up to maybe $100,000 of staff funds as they've tried to accommodate this conflicting story of what should happen with the park and the museum. So we have over nine years of planning, and we still have no plan to evaluate. If this museum is such a great and wonderful idea, these folks should be able to raise their own money to compete planning and not continue to rely on more public funding. The $163,000 that they have to match, it's not there. I don't, I don't think so, I just talked with Erin. Maybe they'll dole that out in increments as it's matched, but they haven't been able to raise that requirement. I think you should require that full amount be raised before you award this $125,000. Secondly, you've heard about the risk, and I disagree with Dave Antonucci's comments and County Council. Eliolano had this document from the council, and he still said the county is at risk, that the commercial operations there could violate the deed restriction, and it could risk loss of the entire park. Why take that risk? Just move the structure. And finally, that brings us to location. If the museum folks weren't so intransigent in trying to locate the museum between the upper and lower parking lots of the existing park, the very location where essentially all current recreation exists now, there would be little ongoing opposition. But they're playing poker with the county and the future of the park by insisting that this unacceptable location is their only place that they will be successful. Your tacit approval of this site, then, does indeed violate CEQA, as it would have tremendous environmental impact. So going on to the future, we will have this discussion down the road, as we've discussed the merits and hopefully public outreach, and more board decisions will be warranted, maybe more informed than you have now. But I think as well, as Kirsten said, an EIR is essential and mandatory. But unfortunately, EIRs only are evaluating CEQA issues, so the political and social and cultural debates don't become part of that. But hopefully that can be part of the conversation. Parking isn't even evaluated in CEQA, but is a sincere concern. So I would propose we need additional honest dialogue about the location, the details of operations, finances, alternatives, and future park amenities. And all this needs to be premised and based on the priority of respecting and enabling the true role of the park to provide recreation for the community and its region. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No questions?
Any other questions or comments on this Agenda Item? Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the board. Any questions for any Board Member? Supervisor Euler?
Not a, excuse me, not a question, but just wanted to clarify that prior to today, I've never even heard of the term squabble valley, let alone used it. However, I am more than happy to appropriate it and incorporate it into my lexicon. So from this point forward, you might hear it from me. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any member of the board?
Erin, I did have one question. There was a question raised about whether the Olympic Museum Foundation had the cash on hand to meet this. Do you have any concerns about that?
I don't. I don't have any concerns about that. To my knowledge, the organization has raised several hundred thousand dollars primarily for construction. However, the contract, the way it's written, requires that they provide matching funds and documentation that they've met that through each invoice. And so they wouldn't be able to invoice for TOT funds if they can't document that in fact they're meeting our expectations with a cash match along with that.
Okay. And then my next clarifying question is for County Council. The issue of CEQA was raised. It's my understanding that this isn't, this action would not be a project under CEQA, and so this particular action would not require CEQA at this point in time, but it would potentially lead to a CEQA process?
That's correct.
Here, talk in line.
Oh, okay. That's correct. This is a finance, a funding agreement. It's not subject to CEQA. I would point out that the funding is being, going to be used for preparation of the EIAQ, which is the first step to CEQA review for any discretionary project. So that is what will lead to the ultimate CEQA.
that is what will lead to the ultimate CEQA determination on this project.
And then last, just as a point of reference, I was actually in the U.S. Forest Service meeting with Eli Alano when he presented the Forest Service position, which is that they are actually not able to determine if this is a commercial proposition or not, and that two things really needed to happen for them to make that determination. The first would be this moving forward in the planning process so that they knew what was being proposed. But the second was, and this was, I think, the thing that folks were a little bit concerned about, is like that old Supreme Court definition of pornography, we'll know it when we see it, that was the position that they took as to the commercial nature. And so there is certainly a lack of clarity, even with the proposal coming forward as to the future. And so I would just say that if this board or any future board does move forward with this project, we need to be extremely mindful of that deed restriction. Those are my only comments. Any other questions or comments from anyone on this? Jack?
Yeah, just to comment, your comment, I mean, the way I understand it from the letter and the, from the forestry is that there's two routes there. The first route is that a determination by them to, for it to be an acceptable use within the current deed restriction. The second is to remove the deed restriction, which they have stated that they're willing to do.
Yes, they indicated they would be willing to remove the deed restriction if we bought the property at that current full market value.
Right. So there is an alternative. You know, this whole thing about CEQA, we do secret documents, people throw rocks at them. So, you know, people ask for CEQA, we do CEQA, and then you'll turn around and turn on us on that. So, you know, either way, I just want to make sure that we do this the right way. So.
Any other questions or comments? All right. What's the pleasure of the board? It sounded like motion home, second Euler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now going to move to, I think we'll move to our timed item, and then we will come back to six, B, C and D. All right. So we are moving to our one-fifteen timed item. This is a county executive item. This is the transient occupancy tax investment policy for the North Lake Tahoe Collection Area. Erin Casey presenting.
Hello, good afternoon. Erin Casey with the County Executive Office. I am here today to present to your board the transient occupancy tax investment policy, or TOT investment policy. But before I get into that detail, I just want to note for you that this presentation is really a kickoff to a series of presentations around our TOT program here at Placer County. So I'm starting by talking about developing policy, that's about allocation of TOT. There's a presentation that will follow mine, that will talk about collection of those funds. And then additionally, when I provide a status update on the Resort Association, we'll talk about community participation and engagement as it relates to recommending expenditures to your board for TOT. And then finally, I already, the first presentation was on a capital project. So this really shows our TOT program in action, if you will. And then there's another presentation on our partnership with the North Tahoe Public Utility District that will demonstrate that as well. So this is really a series of presentations around our TOT program here at Placer County. So the presentation overview today, I'll start with a policy summary and then get into the TOT program here at Placer County, talk with you a little bit about the history of the Tourism Master Plan and the community priorities identified in that, fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen, TOT allocations, community feedback, then some on policy details, reporting and monitoring of this policy, and then any questions your board may have. So I think it's important to really start by highlighting some key elements of this policy. And the first is that it apportioned one-hundred percent of transient occupancy tax funds that are collected in what is called the North Lake Tahoe Collection Area to eastern Placer County communities. And just to be clear, the eastern Placer County communities that I'm referring to share boundaries with the North Lake Tahoe Collection Area. It's just easier to talk about it that way. But they are the same area, so it's really a return-to-source type policy. The second would be that it's designed or allocated to support and mitigate tourism. And I'll talk a little bit more here in a bit, what does that mean? Funds implementation of the Tourism Master Plan and Tourism Master Plan priorities in the community. It also clarifies the board's longstanding practice to allocate TOT funds and support a community priorities. And then finally, it ensures investment rivals other resort communities and closes funding gaps. In the two thousand and fifteen Tourism Master Plan, there's an analysis in there of competitive resort communities. So we're looking at places in Utah and in Colorado, and really how they're investing in things like transportation, visitor-serving amenities, walkability in different communities. And so we want to be able to ensure that we're rivaling those destination resorts in the West. So this is the North Lake Tahoe Collection Area defined. I wanted to make sure that there was a map there included inside the little clicker here. So this is Lake Tahoe, of course, and the boundaries start right here at the southern end here where El Dorado County begins, work their way all the way up here to Donner Summit. And this also includes Squaw Valley and North Star and Martis Valley communities. And so this is important because this is where the TOT we're talking about is both generated and then invested. So TOT in Placer County. So TOT has collected countywide on overnight lodging occupancy, and this is at thirty nights or less, and this is an eight percent rate countywide. In nineteen ninety-six, voters approved an increase to ten percent in that North Lake Tahoe Collection Area, and then reauthorized that two more times in two thousand and two, and then again in two thousand and twelve. What you'll notice here is that the development of the Tourism Master Plan was around the same time that those ballot measures were passed, or a year or two after. So to start, the Tourism Develop Master Plan was created in nineteen ninety-six. And then there were two new iterations of that. In two thousand and four, the Community Investment Master Plan, which was really developed in response to a changing landscape here in our community as well as nationally around tourism. And then again, in two thousand and fifteen, the Tourism Master Plan was a second update to the original plan, and it emphasized things like capital project development, transportation services, and destination marketing and visitor information. So what has been the county's practice as it relates to allocating these funds in the community? So your board has apportioned these funds to implement the Tourism Master Plan and all the iterations of it that I just went over, and specifically for things like transportation services. So expansion of TART, consistent with the TART Systems Plan, or bus shelters, or shuttle services that the community has said they need. Construction and maintenance of bike trails. Bike trails continue to be at the top of any list that we conduct around capital project development here in the community, so really focusing in on that. And then destination marketing services, which include things like visitor information, or conference sales, or sponsorship of special events. Additional funds have also been allocated to services in the community like snow removal, health and human services, and our sheriff's office. So now, just to demonstrate that practice, I'd like to talk about what your board allocated in the current fiscal year into the community. So sixty percent of the TOT generated here in the North Lake Tahoe Collection Area is allocated to the Tahoe Tourism and Promotions budget. And in that budget are things like capital project development for trails, for bus shelters, et cetera. Transportation services, so again, funding things like shuttles that go up to Donner Summit that are needed in those communities. Working towards thirty-minute headways for a TART service here rather than hour-long headways to encourage more use of that service. And then also economic development initiatives. Then forty percent to the county's general fund. So I just want to note, in the current fiscal year, up at the top, that was over ten million dollars. So that's a significant investment to those services that I identified there. And again, all consistent with the Tourism Master Plan, which, by the way, was informed by a robust community process to develop all three versions of that. So your decisions around this, those allocations, are absolutely rooted in community feedback and conversations that you're having with members of the broader community. And then forty percent, over six million dollars, to the county's general fund to support things like snow removal. In this past fiscal year, that was a pretty significant effort, considering the winter that we had. Sheriff's Patrol, and those services continue to increase. As visitation increases into our community, the sheriff's office has to respond to more calls to be able to support that tourism in our community. So we fund that, and then other general county services is needed. So in the last nine months, and we've chucked a lot about this with your board, we've engaged in a robust community outreach process. Staff have met with over fifty community members. This includes business owners, community leaders, board and staff of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, among others. And it's become very clear that members of the community are not quite clear on the county's longstanding practice to allocate TOT that's generated here back into the community. So the county's role in allocating those funds and making decisions along those lines, and then really clarifying the scope and scale of that investment, which has been significant. So the TOT investment policy details include the following. So funds would be invested to achieve the following things: to promote and mitigate tourism. So again, this is consistent with the Tourism Master Plan, as well as the ballot language for all three ballot measures that went through. Supporting implementation of the Tourism Master Plan, that is a foundational document to our program. And then support for public improvements in general county services. This policy apportions funds consistent with your board's longstanding practice. And again, it clarifies the board's role in allocating these funds. We really think that this policy will help address some of the confusion and clarify what has been your board's longstanding practice to do and support a Tourism Master Plan priorities and community needs. Okay. Let me make sure I didn't skip one. No. So monitoring and reporting. So how do we know that we're actually conforming to this policy? Staff completed an analysis of fiscal year thirteen fourteen in the year of two thousand and sixteen and looked at revenues, all revenue sources that are generated here, including TOT and those expenditures, to really understand the services that we were providing, the cost to provide those services. And so that is something that we can continue to do to demonstrate conformance to the policy. Secondly, we are going to be working on the development of an annual report in partnership with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. So the idea there is to highlight for the community, what projects have we funded, what services have been provided, what have you been, what services have you received as a result of this investment in the community. So that way, we can continue with that dialogue so that we continue to clarify for the community what is our practice, the importance of the Tourism Master Plan here in North Lake Tahoe. And with that, I will conclude my remarks and answer any questions you may have.
I don't see any questions from any board member. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment or ask a question on this item?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Cindy Gustafson, CEO of the Resort Association. And I just want to commend staff. Through this entire process, we've had a great opportunity working with county staff to work on an item later on your agenda with our agreement. But we really commend the board, taking this approach to setting this policy and assuring the public up here that you're very well aware of the impacts of tourism and the importance of it in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Please come forward.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Michelle Hagan. I'm a Tahoe City resident and a longtime property owner in Tahoe City. And I wanted to address the housing concerns that we all have regarding workforce housing. And I looked over the resolution. In a prior life, I was a deputy city attorney, so I kind of read these things. And I was wondering whether we could consider future monies being allocated towards either programs or incentives regarding workforce housing. As we know, the housing study indicated we have a twelve-thousand-unit shortfall in housing, and it's all directly connected. If we don't have the employees, we don't have employee staffing businesses. If we don't have employee staffing businesses, then it directly impacts tourism. So I'd ask the board to consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Great comment. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board? We have a motion in a second. Before we take a vote, I too want to thank staff. The question of what happens with TOT has come up repeatedly to me over the years, and I really want to thank staff for acquiescing to my request that we move this forward. So thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move to our next timed, or actually, this is the continuation of the one-fifteen timed item. This is the Administrative Services Short-Term Rental Monitoring and Compliance Services. Doug Jastrow will be presenting. They're over there. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Jerry Gammas, Director of Administrative Services. Can you, there we go. The item before you today is actually a three-part. And the first item is to provide you with an update, a quick, a short update on our short-term rental and monitoring compliance program. Doug Jastrow, our new Revenue Services Manager, will be providing that update to your board. And then the second part of the board item is to request renewal of a one-year agreement with Host Compliance to continue to provide these services for the division. And finally, to also authorize the purchasing manager the authority to execute that agreement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Doug, and we'll be here to answer any questions that your board might have.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to come here to present a little bit about what we do with the Revenue Services Division as far as the collection of the transient occupancy tax. And then we'll, as Mr. Gammas was saying, we'll get into our request for a contract renewal. But we did prepare a quick PowerPoint presentation, and at the beginning, we will, yeah, thank you, go over a little bit of the, there you go, thanks, an overview of our TOT program. So here are the numbers that we have here, which is the total active certificates for TOT. Currently, we have a little over three thousand active certificates on the eastern slope with property management companies, just slightly under fourteen hundred without. That's great. Okay. And on the western slope, we have about a hundred. So totaling about forty-five hundred active TOT certificates. And here are the numbers that we had for this past fiscal year. For the sixteen-seventeen fiscal year, we came in at seventeen-point-six million dollars. That was remitted and collected by Revenue Services. Last year, it was sixteen-point-two. So slightly less than a nine percent increase, one-point-four million dollars. And that leads me to talk about the reasons why we found we have experienced that increase in TOT revenue. Last October, your board approved a contract with Host Compliance, which allowed us to address the issue of the online short-term rental market. There are over a hundred online short-term rental companies, Airbnb, VRVO, HomeAway. And what we found was that many of them were not assisting us in the compliance of the TOT ordinance. And what happened was that we had a, an unfair playing field where certain people were complying, certain people were not. And the ones that weren't complying, you know, there was unfair business practice for the ones that were trying to earn some money on their short-term rental. And not only that, but they were reaping And not only that, but they were reaping the benefits of the TOT that was being paid by the people that were in compliance. Revenue Services did try to address this internally by investigating online the rental properties that were not in compliance but were utilizing these short-term online sites. And what we found was that it was not only expensive to allocate the time, but also very difficult to keep up with these rental advertisements that often change from day to day. So as I said, your board approved the contract with host compliance in October of 2016. It began in November 2016. They were able to identify about 4,600 properties that were in the Placer County unincorporated region that were advertising on short-term rental sites. And when we compared our data with theirs, we found that there was about 1,200 that were not in compliance and were positively identified. So what did we do with that information? In April of 2017, we began our letter campaign where now, to this date, we are at the point where we have sent out approximately 850 letters. And our compliance rate, we've had 464 new registered certificate holders based on those letters. And it breaks down on the eastern-western slope, far more prominent on the eastern slope, 448 certificates issued, a total rental activity of over $8 million with TOT paid at a 10% rate of a little bit over $800,000. And then with that, with the compliance on that, there was a little bit of penalties and interest that was collected as well. On the western slope, much less activity there, but we did register approximately 40 new certificate holders, a little over half a million dollars in total rental activity with the 8% TOT rate. That came out to a little over $40,000. And at the Revenue Services Division, we currently are utilizing two full-time employees to handle the TOT remittance and administration of the program, letters coming in, letters going out, phone calls, emails addressing those, and also quite a deal of reporting as well on the numbers. So what we're doing next is that we are currently working on the letters that have been sent out, the properties that have been positively identified and that are not currently in compliance. So we have sent out a second letter to those that didn't respond to the first, and approximately 326 received second letters. And right now, we are currently working on sending out tax determination notices, a third letter to those that originally received letters in April and May and did not comply with the timeframes of the first and second letter. And so in accordance with the ordinance, we made a tax determination of the amount that they should pay and sent out those letters. And with the positively identified properties, we are continuing to send out new first letters as soon as they are identified. And actually with that, that kind of concludes my overview of the TOT program as it's being administered with Revenue Services. And so if the board has any questions at this time, we'd be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Duran. Yes, thank you very much. My question is for legal counsel. I know that other cities, other jurisdictions have gone after Airbnb and VRVO and everybody else that's out there and has been able to get settlements with them that provide the opportunity for them to pay as opposed to all of this going after the homeowner through this process that you talk about. Has anybody looked into the risk reward? Because by my numbers, if we upped it by the 300 or the 400, you said it was about 1.4, we probably have another 1.4, give or take $100,000, $200,000 out there. What is the, you know, is there any point in time when we're going to consider litigation against these folks to get them, to get the money directly from them as opposed to the landowner?
Supervisor Duran, I've been pretty intimately involved in this. I think actually Jennifer Merchant is better positioned to answer that question because this has been part of the conversation we've had with the CEO office and the Board of Suits. And county council hasn't really been part of that conversation to date.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and council and staff. Yeah, we have had a lot of conversations trying to determine how to approach the challenge. There are not other jurisdictions who have sued Airbnb or other web-based platforms. Actually, Airbnb sued the City and County of San Francisco, which resulted in the settlement that they have. So Airbnb is collecting on behalf of that jurisdiction and providing the locations of the properties. That is one of the significant sticking points that we have had in conversations. Jerry, I want to say we've been on the phone with them at least two or three times, conference calls, including auditor controller, our department Revenue Services and council, trying to determine the best way to go forward with Airbnb and other online platforms. They were interested in engaging in an agreement with us to provide the funding, but they would never provide us with the full list of the properties. So we didn't know the location. We didn't know how many properties. We didn't know the revenue of each property. And as I think you've heard a little bit from the community and will continue to hear from the community, it's important to know where those operators are. Certainly in the Tahoe Basin as it relates to environmental improvements, it's important for us to know where different operators are located so we know what kind of transit service to provide, what kind of parking regulations to put in place and to enforce. It makes it very difficult to enforce when we don't even really know, is it somebody's allowed family staying there? Is it Airbnb? Should they be paying us taxes or not? So we've been pretty hesitant to enter into an agreement. I know Nevada County has, Humboldt County has. Their collections are much less significant than ours. So we have made a determination to use host compliance to identify the properties and go after them directly. Certainly Airbnb or other online platforms, just like Travelocity or Expedia, Booking.com are required to show a TOT collection on there. So are they consistent with our ordinance? We say no, and they disagree with that. And the only way they were willing to comply is if we signed an agreement that eliminated any opportunity for us to identify, audit, locate those properties. So it's something that we've been hesitant to do. And like other jurisdictions, we're going about it this way to try to identify them through a contract and then go after them and get those monies remitted so that we can spend them on things in the community.
Don't take this the wrong way, but that's why I wanted to direct my question to legal counsel. Because being in the legal profession for a number of years, I've never been able to get an agreement over the phone. So I would like our county council to take a look at what the options are and provide and prepare a full analysis as to what we can do legally. That's the only way you're going to get an agreement.
We've certainly had those conversations.
Well, I'd like a more in-depth discussion.
The one thing I would point, mention is that there is a going trend amongst other jurisdictions and cities to adopt far more stringent type code provisions to go after the Airbnbs. That's a going trend. You see it in San Francisco. Several of the southern counties are doing that, and that's certainly something that the board could look at also. It provides just more teeth into going after them.
Well, moving forward, I would like our legal department involved and engaged in this because I see it as more of a legal issue now as opposed to a policy issue. So.
Yeah, council has absolutely been involved, and we will continue that for sure. I think that based on your board's feedback, we can move forward. There's a draft TOT ordinance that we've been working on for a fair amount of time to bring forward to your board. And our ordinance actually was a little bit more stringent than the City and County of San Francisco. So that's why we felt that they were required to comply in the first place, but we can certainly go back and do a little bit more diligence on that. I think that Revenue Services and the Auditors Department is probably going to be ready to bring forward some code changes to your board here fairly soon. And we can go back and see which one of the, if there are any changes we need to make that are consistent with the changes in the web-based platform so that we can be more strong in our position to collect.
My only concern is, and I'm not trying to put this gentleman out of business, but had we had the opportunity to go back a couple of months, perhaps a year, and have this in front of us as opposed to hearing about it, you know, that a decision was already made, we might have went the litigation route and we might not have spent $200,000 on this other route. That's my biggest concern. So.
And I think to be clear, Supervisor Duran, this did come in front of us just about a year ago. And at that time, we did touch on various approaches to this, and it was the decision of the board at that time to move forward with the host compliance. We can certainly
No, I understand the host compliance piece, but what I'm saying is, is that from what we just talked about, legal has not been involved. You just told me that, right?
They have been, they have been involved. They have been less involved.
Okay, now they have been involved. Okay. All right, I'm finished with this one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this agenda item? That was the update. Any questions or comments from any member of the audience on the update? Okay, we're going to move to B2. We're being asked to approve the renewal of the contract with host compliance.
Yes. Go ahead. As on the final slide that you see here with host compliance, although that they have done good effective work for us, going forward, we're finding that with each month, they're identifying approximately 250 new addresses. Some of those could very well be properties that are in compliance, but it's a dynamic market and new ads are coming up all the time. And they also provide us with rental monitoring and then compliance with who is currently registered as far as being able to estimate the amount of income that's coming in. And also, we're working with them to streamline the online registration process, payment, and reporting options.
Anything else on this? Okay. So our board is being asked to approve the renewal of the contract and to authorize the procurement manager to sign all required documents. Before we get to that, any other members of the public have any comments or questions on this? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion, Duran, a second, Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move now to our 140 timed item. This is a county executive item, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Status Update on Contract Negotiations. Aaron Casey presenting. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Aaron Casey with the County Executive Office, pleased today to provide you with a status update on our partnership with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. So the presentation outlined for today includes just a brief review of contract negotiations, something I've covered in the past but just want to remind you of, some of the community feedback that we've received as a result of our community outreach, both organizations, facilitated sessions, some of the discussion points and outcomes from those meetings, our partnership agreement, next steps, and then public meetings that we have tentatively planned for early November I'd like to share with you today. So just as a reminder, the contract negotiations review. On April 1st, our office submitted a budget and desired scope of work term. This was revised from what we had done in the past, and so we asked for a significantly scaled back set of services as are related to transportation and capital projects, but maintaining that marketing function with the resort association. On May 3rd, we received a counterproposal from the organization, but then after that, met with them on the 19th. So county executive office staff as well as the Resort Association's executive committee and staff met with us, and we decided that the best next steps would be to bring in a facilitator to help us identify our shared interests and areas of alignment to see if we could develop a future partnership together. And you can see there that those sessions took place on June 23rd and again on August 31st. Most recently, on October 11th, we talked about our schedule, so what schedule the community outreach meetings would look like, as well as when we'd bring a new and revised contract forward to your board, and then also next steps. So before I get into some of that detail, I'd like to talk about the community feedback that both organizations have received, really over the last two years, but in particular in the last nine months. So of most importance, I'd say, is to preserve the community voice. I talked with you earlier about the Tourism Master Plan and the robust outreach and community engagement that was a part of developing those plans. And so maintaining and preserving that community voice is very important. We were also asked to slow the process down. The changes that we were requesting were significant from what had been in place for two decades. And so the community said, wow, this is really, this is quick. These are significant. Can we slow this down? Can we understand it a little bit better? Why are you proposing these changes? How are we going to be engaged? How are we going to continue to support the Tourism Master Plan? And so actually, the one-month and six-month contract reflect in some ways that feedback, among other things. Expand participation within eastern Placer County, so we have several communities here. We have Kings Beach, Tahoe City, Squaw Valley, Donner Summit. So ensuring that there is representation from all of these communities, as in some cases their needs are the same and sometimes they're unique. Maintaining that partnership with the Resort Association was also feedback that we received to continue to move forward with the organization to implement the Tourism Master Plan. And that's what we have here on the last bullet point is to continue public outreach on the process of Tourism Master Plan priorities. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what that's going to look like. So in our facilitated sessions, there were two of those, as I said, there were several discussion points that we covered. The first there is to review and identify the county and the Resort Association roles as it relates to implementing the Tourism Master Plan. So some of what we had proposed was a change in those roles. And so perhaps some of that made sense, perhaps some of it did not make sense, but let's look at that and decide, okay, is that the right role for the county to have? The county's roles expanding in the community, great, but let's make sure that what you're actually doing is the right thing. And the same with the Resort Association. Streamline transportation planning, the second point there. There are other organizations now engaged in transportation services and transportation initiatives, so really looking to leverage some of that knowledge, some of that expertise as part of our planning to determine what is the best way to expand service and make sure that transportation is where the community expects it to be to support tourism here. Public engagement on Tourism Master Plan priorities, so how are we going to continue that process? That's been something that we've been doing for a long time. The Resort Association has been instrumental in facilitating that for us. So how do we ensure that that continues as we move ahead? The Resort Association also engaged in an 18-month organizational review process where they looked at all the functions of their organization. They looked at their marketing program, their transportation and capital project program, their governance structure, the Chamber of Commerce. And so they really wanted the opportunity to look at that, review that, and see how they may change or revise their organization as a result of some of that feedback that came out of that process. Also discussed objectives for the TOT investment policy, which you heard earlier. So we did talk about this in our facilitated discussions, talked about what the objectives of that policy would be to ensure that we are capturing that when we develop that resolution for your board. And then of course, schedule the next steps. So now I'm going to talk about some of the outcomes from those meetings and the partnership details that we discussed. The first up there is to co-chair a committee. So as you all know, the Resort Association has facilitated a committee that reviews and vets capital-serving or capital projects, visitor-serving capital projects, and then makes a recommendation to your board for TOT funding. So that has been an important process, and we want to continue that process. And so we've agreed to co-chair, so working closely together to ensure that broad community participation, not only in terms of vetting projects, but also in submitting applications for funding in the future. Also to co-convene public meetings. So we think that this is important. Your board approved an update to the Tourism Master Plan in 2015, as I mentioned earlier, but things have changed even in the two-year period. You also heard someone speak about housing. So where does housing fit into that? So working together to convene public meetings around the Tourism Master Plan to ensure that the committee I referenced in the first bullet point is making decisions rooted in that community feedback, to ensure the master plan is actually capturing the changing landscape here in our community as well. To develop a marketing plan, so the Resort Association is currently working on this, develop a marketing plan that would revise performance indicators, that would be aligned with industry standards. To develop a multi-year contract, so this is something To develop a multi-year contract, so this is something that we've talked about with the organization for a while now, so when we bring a contract forward to your board in July, it could be a multi-year contract, and with that would be a marketing plan. So you would understand where the organization tends to go as it relates to marketing strategies and what those funds are going to support, support in the marketing arena. And then finally, review funding strategies with the community. This is referenced in the Tourism Master Plan. Within that plan, the current plan, there are over $100 million in capital projects that have been identified in both Tier One and Tier Two priority areas. That's significant. So how are we going to fund all of that? How are we going to close those funding gaps? And so really looking at a variety of strategies together to see what the best way may be to, to achieve that. So we have, as part of our meetings, the public meetings I talked about in the previous slide, where we want to engage the community around Tourism Master Plan priorities, we've agreed to co-convene three meetings here in early November. And you can see here up on the slide, they're going to be in various communities here so we can capture every one, hopefully, or as many people as possible here. The first one would be November 1st here in Kings Beach, the second would be November 7th in Tahoe City, and then the third would be November 8th in Donner Summit. And the meeting objectives include review of the Tourism Master Plan priorities. So what have we accomplished? What's missing or what's next? And included in there would be some funding strategies to achieve our goals. Also, we'd like to talk with the community about a proposed committee structure. So who would be sitting on this committee? What would that look like? How do we ensure broad representation and participation in this process? So putting that proposed set, set of seats forward that we've discussed jointly and see what the community's thoughts are. What do they like? Who's missing? Who do we need to add? And then bring something back to your board for consideration. Next steps, to co-convene those public meetings that I just spoke about. Then to develop the committee structure, so that would, that's a really horrible, TMP, CPAC, that's all we could come up with in the short period of time that we had, but we'll work on the name of that committee. But really to develop that, that structure with community input. To develop funding strategies to support the Tourism Master Plan, we would bring a contract forward to your board in January of 2018 that would get us through the remainder of the fiscal year, so the organization can continue to work on its marketing plan. And then we would bring a multi-year contract, hopefully, forward to your board to begin July 1st, 2018. And with that, I will conclude and answer any questions that your board may have.
Any questions from any member of the board? I see, oh, there we go, Supervisor Euler.
Couple of slides back. We had a.
Closer to you.
I should be closer to you. I pushed the button, I swear.
You're not ready.
Oh, sorry about that. That's your, which one's good? So, a couple of slides back, to, to, to keep on.
Who's doing it? Am I doing that?
It was, you had, the bottom bullet was, ah, one more, I think. I don't know, anyway. You were talking about possible funding strategies and us working with the Resort Association. And having just been through similar exercises that resulted in us going to the ballot with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, I would encourage us as the county not to take the lead in any kind of outreach, polling, any kind of thing like that, but rather rely heavily on our industry partners to kind of take the lead in that polling. I, I, I think it, one of the things that if we were to look at a measure M again in the future, I would be encouraging my colleagues to, to try to bring in the industry to engage earlier in that process as opposed to us taking the lead as we did as PCTPA on some of the polling and some of that public outreach. We funded it as PCTPA instead of the folks that ultimately ended up engaging in helping us run the campaign. I, I, I think it, you get a, perhaps a little different outcome when you let the people that you're going to be relying on to actually engage the campaign, help phrase the questions and any kind of polling, any kind of outreach that gets done. So that's all, that's my only.
Thank you for your feedback, Supervisor Euler.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Holmes.
Well, I just want to thank you for your particip, for your program. And there's a couple of themes, there's actually one theme that runs through your presentation, and that's community participation and community input, and that's exactly what we need to find. So I want to thank you for doing that, and members of the committees, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
Okay, I see no other comments or questions from the board. Are there any members of the, Kirk, your light just lit up again. Oh, it's Greg, bad Greg. Okay, any questions or comments from any member of the public on this? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Samir Tuma, Vice Chair of the Resort Association Board. First thing I want to do is thank county staff, in particular David, Jennifer, and Erin. We had long days, we had late evenings, and people went above and beyond, and I thank my colleagues for that as well on the board. It was a very earnest process. I think people were, were really concerned that we come to a good conclusion and a good outcome, and everybody involved was willing to put in the time, somebody did it on their own time. So thank everybody very much for that. And I'd also like to thank the board members that we're looking at. I know we all came and met with you, and everybody met with you, and you guys helped shape and form that conversation. So I think, I think what we have here is a result of a lot of people putting in a lot of work and really going for something that, that is meaningful. And I think at the end of the day, really what we, you know, as we look back on this process, when you get an economy that's doing well, you tend to get pressures. And so that's some of what we've seen, is pressure on infrastructure, pressure on traffic, not that these are new problems, but they're exacerbated. And what happened was our pie was only so big. And so there's a lot of people saying, we want this, we want that, and that's what's created some of the tension. I think key to this proposal and key to making this work forward is to make that pie bigger. And that's really what I, I think is, is fundamental to what we proposed as, as, as a team, is to come up with additional funding sources in order to meet the Tourism Master Plan, so we can do marketing, we can do infrastructure, we can do transit, we can do not everything that we possibly want because we're not going to get there, but we're so woefully short at this point in the process. And so really key, and, and what I'm asking you, and we're going to ask the community and staff to continue to support, is efforts to, to do just that. And I think we've come up with some plans and some ideas that hopefully put the burdens where they should be, in the sense that, you know, a lot, I mean, a lot of the pressures that we're feeling come from the tourists that are coming to town. And so, you know, we need to make sure that whether it's through TOT collections, through third parties or what have you, that we're growing that pie in a way that reflects the usage of our community and therefore allows us to fund the things that need to be funded. So I'm optimistic this is the, the next chapter in that, in that process. We are going to need support, and I'm just asking for that going forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Samir. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments on the board before we take an action? We don't need an action. We're just receiving an update. Thank you. Okay, great, we'll move along in that case. Clerk, your light just lit up, was there something?
I was just going to do a mic check, actually, but thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, mic check, go ahead. Awesome. Good work. Okay, we're now going to move to our 2 o'clock timed item. This is a Public Works and Facilities item. This is an update on the Tahoe City Fire Station Properties, plural. Welcome. Mark Wrightout, Suzie Vos, everybody in the whole world basically showing up today. It's the whole team.
Good afternoon, Chair Montgomery, Mark Wrightout, Public Works and Facilities, here with Lori and Suzie. It's been a really collaborative effort, want to thank them for their hard work on this, and we're pleased to present an update on the fire station properties, this outreach project. I'll need to, not yet. So we're going to give you an update on the outreach, the RFI that we're preparing to release for the Firehouse properties. We're also going to be talking about the Community Center Building and requesting authorization to receive that from the Tahoe City Utility District via quick claim. Thank you. And then authorization to negotiate lease with North Tahoe Arts who occupy the building. Since we last presented to you on the 25th of July, staff released a flash vote to about 430 North Tahoe residents to receive additional input that we're incorporating in the RFI process. Many of the ideas were consistent with what we've heard earlier. Some individuals liked restaurant space, some wanted flexible community space, and there were others who wanted no building at all to replace the two properties, two buildings on the property. So as we were going through the finalization of the RFI, we decided that a graphic analysis of the concepts that we've heard through these public workshops could benefit proposers as they're looking at this opportunity to redevelop the site. Suzie worked with local architectural firms and secured the commitment of seven architects to donate their time, about seven hours of their time on the 21st of September. And I really want to thank and recognize the staff of these firms that came out that day. Jordan Willday of Dale Cox Architects, Jordan Knighton of JK Architects in Tahoe City, Eli Meyer of MWA Truckee, Wyatt Ogilvy came to visit, Don Folda from Ward Young Architects, and Jack Patton and Terry Green from Williamson Patton came up and spent the day with us. And it was really exciting to walk around the three different teams and hear this lively discussion the designers were having about exactly what are the opportunities that could go on in the site in the future. So at the end of the day, the last two hours was a presentation to the 25 members of the public that were there, and it was really interesting to watch them engage, the designers ask questions and, and offer, offer ideas. So it's really small, and you'll see in the board packet, we included the full RFP, RFI, because we wanted to start this presentation to your board today as kind of the kickoff on this solicitation process. We're looking at releasing the RFI the 1st of November, and these drawings are, are in there with a brief description of each of the three teams. This first team looked at retaining the Firehouse building and making it as transparent as possible to permit those views from the street going south to the lake. They proposed moving the Tahoe Community Center or demolishing it to have a plaza space with a flexible community space underneath at the beach level that could serve as beach serving concessions or gathering space underneath the plaza to the east of the fire station building. The site, or the team, the second team, they looked at retaining the Firehouse similarly, recognizing it's an essential services building and quite a durable structure. They looked at it turning into a market hall that could be a maker's space or pop-ups for designers, artists, food vendors. And the Tahoe Community Center Building, the existing building, would be replaced with a flexible indoor/outdoor building that could serve, you know, the gathering and the artistic needs of the community and, and also open up to provide views of the lake. This one had an interesting business concept that would have international art competitions that could fund some of the operation of the site by having people apply and enter in those competitions. And then the idea was to have a sculpture garden going along the bluff that could be up for the period of the, the competition. This third team, they talked a lot about the embodied energy in the Firehouse building, recognizing it took a lot of effort to truck the concrete to the site and build it, and then if it were to be taken down, it would expend additional energy. And so they looked at renovating it in sort of a near-term use, adaptive reuse, and looking kind of grandly at taking the cars off of Commons Beach and having a structure reach down onto the lower level. This concept had housing and retail kind of stepping down the site, recognizing that's a longer-term vision for the property. So as I mentioned, we've included these graphics in the RFI. We're giving you this update today. We're looking to release the RFI the 1st of November. We're going to have about a six-week period where it's going to be on the site. We're going to have two different non-mandatory walkthroughs where proposers can come and meet with staff and others to ask questions. We'll be putting out addenda if there are questions that need to be answered. We're going to be working over the next couple of weeks to pull together a review team. We're looking at involving the TCPOD, TCDA, and other community organizations, as well as county staff, to look at these proposals in light of the criteria that we talked about with you last time when we were here in July. We're going to take all of that, digest it, report back to the community, and really focus at being with your board again in early 2018, hopefully with some robust proposals that we can discuss at that time and make further recommendations. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Lori to talk a little bit about the second and third parts of our item today, receiving the TCC and the North Tahoe Arts lease agreement.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Lori Morse, Property Manager. We're seeking your board's approval of two other recommendations. One, to accept the Tahoe Community Center as a capital asset and to adopt a resolution delegated authority to the Director of Public Works and Facilities to record a quick claim deed received from the Tahoe City Public Utility District. And the second, to authorize the Director to enter into a lease agreement with the North Tahoe Arts for a month-to-month lease agreement that would provide for their continued occupancy of a portion of the Tahoe Community Center. The, the property at hand is the Tahoe Community Center, and it actually is two buildings totaling 3,000, 3,200 square feet. One of it is a 2,600-square-foot Community Center Building, which is the one occupied by North Tahoe Arts, and then in addition, which is a 579-square-foot building, which is immediately adjacent to the Community Center and the Firehouse Building. The county has maintained that it owns the Tahoe Commons Beach by virtue of a, the recollection of the 1871 plat map for the township of Tahoe City. And there are two buildings particularly that are affixed to that property, and through the virtue of those property being attached to Tahoe Commons Beach, the county has taken the position and asserted interest in, into those buildings. About, I want to say about three years ago, your board acted to receive a quick claim deed for the Fire Station Building, and today, we're asking your board to receive a quick claim for the Community Center Building. The, the majority of the building, as I mentioned, has been utilized by the North Tahoe Arts for their art gallery, for their members, as well as for art programming. And the Center Building, which is formerly occupied by the Chamber of Commerce, has been vacant for some time. It was originally constructed as a library. Over the past several years, the Tahoe City Public Utility District has indicated interest in seizing operation and maintenance of the Community Center and quit claiming the property to the county. And recently, in May of 2017, the district informed the North Tahoe Arts that it desires to discontinue its landlord relationship with that tenant and as of November 1st. And that's when the county began discussions with the PUD to receive a quick claim deed that would serve to convey the property to the county. Actually, as of Friday, the district board unanimously approved the quick claim. So recognizing the desire to keep the Tahoe Community Center occupied through this reuse process, staff has worked with the North Tahoe Arts to provide for continuation of their occupancy through a month-to-month lease agreement. In those discussions, a key issue has been the ability of the North Tahoe Arts to, to pay market rent for its occupancy. Over the years, the Arts has paid a reduced rent of $856, which has been reduced in, in acknowledgement of the Arts providing arts programs to the Tahoe community. And the Arts has not paid for utilities or janitorial services. And our discussions to date has provided us confidence that the Arts is fully prepared to develop a business plan that provides their sustainability and ability to increase their, their costs in staying in the, the building under a lease with the county. They've also acknowledged that the duration of their occupancy is uncertain, given the, the status of the reuse efforts and the unknowns of the outcome of our RFA process. So therefore, the lease that we're recommending is to provide for two months at the current rent. the status of the reuse efforts and the unknowns of the outcome of our RFA process. So therefore, the lease that we're recommending is to provide for two months at the current rent. And then as of January 1st, the rent would go up for the Arts, and they would actually reduce their premises at that time to be just the first floor and the office of the second floor. The upstairs meeting area or community area would be, use would be discontinued at that time. The rent on January 1st will be increased to $1,025 per month and will increase by approximately 7% every two months until November 1st, 2018, when it will be at what we consider a market rent of $1,423 per month. And from day one, the Arts has agreed to, to pay all gas and electric and take on all janitorial responsibilities for the building. With your board's approval of our recommendations, we'll finalize the lease that will become effective November 1st and will be based substantially on the material terms that are provided to your board in your packet today and subject to county council and risk management approval. And assuming the board's rent structure, year one lease revenues will help offset approximately 12,000 in annual costs to maintain and operate the building, and we will have a shortfall of about $3,800 in year one. But in year two, when the rent adjusts to market, we will realize approximately 5,000 in lease revenues or net income. So in summary, the acceptance of the quitclaim from the, the district is considered necessary to clear any ambiguity associated with ownership of the community center and to provide flexibility for the future reuse of the former fire station and community center. There may be some deferred capital improvements required. If such are required, we'll be presenting to those, those costs to your board in the upcoming fiscal year 2018 budget process. So this concludes our formal presentation, and we requested your board approve our recommendations, and we welcome any questions from your board. I do wish to acknowledge that Kim Snyder, Executive Director, and Pam Sutton, the President of the Board of the North Tahoe Arts, is present here as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Duran.
Yes, hey, thanks again for bringing this one forward. Could you also include the annual maintenance costs when you come back with that information on any capital improvements that you need to make? And also, have you inspected the building for ADA liability? And we want to make, also want to make sure that it's free of any liens or lawsuits before we take it.
Okay, we will.
Thanks.
Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, I just had a question about the Tahoe Arts building. The upstairs part has an office space in it, and then there's a community room, but why isn't the community room included in the rental space?
We just, we excluded it primarily due to accessibility concerns to the second floor.
So public accessibility? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, correct.
Okay, well, because it needs ADA?
Correct.
All right.
There's no elevator.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Holmes, just as a, just to further clarify, that room has been used for public use, but we unfortunately really can't allow the public use in, in that second floor. We can allow the private use of the office because of the terms of the contract. So hopefully, we will be able to come up and identify a, a solution to help the North Tahoe Arts folks achieve their goals of continuing to have public classes and art displays. I see no other board questions. I will open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? This is your opportunity. I did see Pam Sutton come in. There she is, welcome.
Do I have to, no, I don't have to push a button.
No, you just identify yourself.
I'm Pam Sutton, I'm President of the Board of North Tahoe Arts, and I really appreciate having spoken with all of the you supervisors from time to time. Kim and I have really had a, I would say, an interesting learning process in dealing with the county because we haven't had to do that prior. North Tahoe Arts has been in that building for over 20 years, and we understand the risk that we're undertaking of staying there on a month-to-month lease, but honestly, it's the greatest place for us for right now. And we really appreciate also, and this may sound sort of counterintuitive, but we appreciate the flexibility that the county is offering us to do a stepped-up increase to our rent. We know at some point we will need to assume responsibility for rack rate or whatever, but we really appreciate that you're not just kind of tossing us into the deep end on that. And I feel very confident, we've been looking at our numbers, we've been looking at our programs, and I feel very confident that we will be able to meet the financial objectives that you're setting out before us. And I also really appreciate the staff working with us in coming from the initial lease and what we wanted, we're about this far apart, and we've come together on that. And so I really hope that this, that you, I urge you guys to approve our, our ongoing month-to-month lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any other questions or comments on this item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. I was wanting to ask if you guys had studied the historical value and what the results of that had been on the building, the community center.
I'm going to defer to facility staff to that.
Yeah, the Arts building is on the Historic Register, the state.
So does that require that it be kept, or what is?
It would take additional analysis and determination, but it could be moved or demolished. It's not a unique example of the style of architecture, I understand.
Okay, yeah. I just remember it was the post office and the library and where we met for brownies and where we had music lessons.
And I'm sorry, would you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue Daniels. Sue Lewis when I was in Brownies. So anyway, thanks.
Noted, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Before I bring it back to the board, just a couple of quick comments on this. We are hopefully going to be going out for an RFI in the near future. Literally just before this board meeting started, I received an email that the Arts Group is, or one of the Arts Groups at least, is putting together an RFI, so I'm delighted to hear that. But also just wanted to address the question that comes up consistently about old Fire Station 51. Yes, there was an agreement based on a handshake when, before that building was constructed, that when the fire department left, they would tear it down. There is literally nothing in writing, and so when the fire department left, the county had no way to compel that that building be removed. And if you have any additional questions, our former fire chief is here. Not to throw you to the wolves or anything, but that just, that question comes up consistently, and unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your perspective, there was nothing in writing that was enforceable. In fact, there was nothing in writing. All right, what is the pleasure of the board? You have a motion, Holmes, a second, Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Wow, that was a, a lot. We're now going to move back to our department items. We're going to move to Department Item 6B. This is the North Tahoe Regional Park Trail and Signage Upgrade. We're being asked to enter into a use agreement with North Tahoe Public Utility District.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Erin Casey with the County Executive Office here to present to you today a contract. But before I do that, I think it's important to highlight for your board the partnership between Placer County and the North Tahoe Public Utility District. Thank you Supervisor Holmes for noting the theme throughout the presentations today of public outreach and engagement. I also think an important element has been partnership. Really, we couldn't accomplish a lot of the work we do here without the partners that we do work with, and so I'd like to demonstrate that partnership here through this presentation. And also because the North Tahoe Public Utility District will be hosting a reception here for your board later this evening, so. And also would like to acknowledge the staff and board members who are here. So Dwayne White Law is here, Sarah Coolidge, and Sue Daniels somewhere back there, I think. Hopefully, I captured the board and staff who are here. Glad that they could be here today. So first, I just want to cover with your board a list of some of the projects that we've worked with the NTPUD on over the years. This is not necessarily comprehensive. I think the county has partnered with the PUD in a variety of capacities, but wanted to focus in on the TOT-funded projects that we've worked with the NTPUD on. And the first one up there is in 2006, your board awarded $500,000 in TOT funds for the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area Shoreline Improvement. And what I think is important here is not only is that an important partnership, but this leveraged significant funds from the California Tahoe Conservancy, as well as the Department of Boating and Waterways, in order to complete the project, several million dollars in fact. And so this is another strategy for us moving forward to be successful as it relates to implementing the Tourism Master Plan. And the NTPUD has been very successful in leveraging TOT funds to complete some of these important projects. The second project there is the North Tahoe Regional Park Improvements. I've got some photos I'll share with you. Then the North Tahoe Events that are Marketing Improvement Program, the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area Access Bike Trail. So that's actually Phase Two of the first project, so over a million dollars in TOT awarded for these improvements. The North Tahoe Playground Renovation Project, and then what's before your board today, which is a contract between Placer County and the NTPUD for North Tahoe Regional Park Improvements. So this is a map I wanted to include just to orient you on the site and location of the park, as well as some of these other projects that we've done. So this is North Lake Tahoe here. You'll see Carnelian Bay over in this area, and Kings Beach, this is 267 here. This is where the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area is located, and then up here is the North Tahoe Regional Park here in Tahoe Vista. These are some photos of the project of the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area, which included a lot of additional amenities, including parking for boats, cars, trailers, as well as boat launch areas, wayfinding signage, trail access, et cetera. Very robust program here. And so these are some of the photos of that work that took place in that recreation area that is a result of that TOT support that your board provided. Also, the North Tahoe Regional Park, some of the improvements that occurred there. These are bathroom facilities that are new, as well as wayfinding signage that's right off of Highway 28. So the current contract that's before your board today is a TOT-funded capital project. It is a contract between the county and the North Tahoe Public Utility District for up to $135,000 in funds. The contract term is October 23rd, so today, through August 1st of 2018. And specifically, those improvements or services include trail improvements, additional wayfinding and interpretive signage leading to and within the regional park into Tahoe Vista, as well as replacement of a park horse and equipment there. So that's the trails where you walk through, there's some exercise equipment, so it gets a lot of use, and so making some improvements there is important. Your board approved funds for this project actually in 2015, March 10th, 2015. This is back when the contracts were managed in partnership with the North Tahoe Resort Association. We changed that function back in October, where we transitioned the administration of these contracts from the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association to Placer County. So we're taking those funds and we're developing that contract so the organization can move forward. They were a bit delayed in completing these projects due to the winter that we had last year. This is a Tier One priority in the Tourism Master Plan, and as I've stated already, I think it demonstrates community partnership. And with that, any questions that your board may have, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from board members? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on this item? Sue Daniels, come forward.
Thank you again. My name is Sue Daniels. Okay, so I got it right this time. I just wanted to speak to thank the county and Erin for your presentation. Jennifer, for all of the work you have done towards this and how you've been such a great partner with the North Tahoe PUD for many years. It speaks well to the attention that the north shore of Lake Tahoe gets, and we really appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you later today as a thank you for coming up to the area at our reception, but again, the North Tahoe PUDs extending their warm thanks.
Thanks, Sue. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this issue? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. It's been moved with approval, Duran, and second by Yure. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, hearing none? Thank you, the motion is passed.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes.
Oh, you're welcome. I handled that pretty well, I think.
All right. We are now going to move to Agenda Item 6C. This will be a presentation update on the Mountain Housing Council activities. Jennifer Merchant will be presenting. You would think I could say the name Jennifer, but no.
It's pretty easy.
Actually, and I believe Stacy Caldwell is co-presenting this item.
Yes, she is. Come on up. Do you want, do you mind if I stand on this side since I'm a lefty?
No, I'll come over here then.
Awesome, thank you. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jennifer Merchant and Stacy Caldwell. Stacy is the CEO of the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation. As we get started with this item, I do want to remind your board that you approved a couple items related to this matter back in April. So a $50,000 contract for the term of three years with the community foundation in order to support and implement the goals of the Mountain Housing Council. And you also took action to appoint Supervisor Jennifer Montgomery to the council, so she is Placer County's representative on that council. One or two other housekeeping items. Shawna Doherty, who is managing the project on behalf of the community foundation, Shawna, can you give a wave? Is here today, so great kudos to her. There are many partners with this program and representing different jurisdictions in the region, including Placer County, Nevada County, Town of Truckee, and other special districts, and it's a lot of pulling different interests and people together. So Shawna does great work on behalf of the organization. Also, I do have a couple of handouts that talk about the countywide efforts that are underway related to housing. Those are in the back. There's a colorful handout that, that looks at what we're accomplishing related to the work plan, and then a copy of the work plan for anybody who would like to see that. So wanted to cover that before we got into our conversation about the Mountain Housing Council. Okay, so Stacy, this is your slide.
Okay, so, good afternoon. Just a little reminder of how we got here today. After our 2016 needs assessment that we all went in together, Placer County, Town of Truckee, and Nevada County helped pay for the study, and the community foundation convened the partners to execute on the study. We learned that we have a population of about 30,000 citizens in this community and about 33,000 houses, and so on paper, it kind of looks like we have quite a bit of houses for the people who live here. But we very quickly learned that many of our housing units sit vacant more than 50% of the time. 65% of those housing units sit vacant more than half the time. We also know that many of our citizens are overpaying for housing, and so 67% of them are paying more than 30%, and still 26% of our citizens are paying more than half of their income on housing. So we know that there are a number of below-market rate units in the region, but none of them are available. Many of them are actually on a waiting list anywhere between 18 months to four years, depending on the housing size. So with that, those very compelling numbers, we all recognized that there was something to do beyond just creating a study. And one of the cornerstone recommendations from Bay Economics was for us to create some type of regional entity. But if you recall, at that time, we were really questioning, what is the right regional entity? Is it a housing authority? Well, we have housing authorities. Is it a housing trust? Well, we have housing trusts. What are some of the more innovative financial types of organizations that would, we could create? So in the very beginning, we really thought, let's just get everybody to the table and think about this together. And so we've set a vision now, and it's that all people that work and live in the Tahoe Truckee region have access to diverse quality and affordable housing. And you were going to cover the mission.
I am going to cover the mission. And as I do that, I do want to point out that the Mountain Housing Council has met two times. It will be meeting again here in the next couple of months, so that the organization has started its work already.
Absolutely.
And its mission, as you see here, before you, working to accelerate solutions to local and achievable housing for those, I always change it to who, live in the Tahoe Truckee region. That must be an old version of that. So we're going to talk today about some progress that the entity has made in the intervening months since your board's approval to participate.
And it feels like it's been a lot. I think for the community, it's not fast enough, and it's really never enough. So recognizing that this is a significant issue that we're facing, not only that we're facing not only as individual families, but businesses. But I do take heart that a lot has been accomplished in the two meetings that we've had thus far and all the work in between. And just to echo Jennifer's comments, much of that is because we have a very competent master facilitator in Shawna Doherty. So thank you so much. But we also have all the right people at the table. We have 25 different organizations, three of the local governments. We have TRPA. We have eight special districts. We have seven different associations representing business interests from NLTRA to the Truckee Chamber, to the Board of Realtors, to Contractors Association, to different nonprofits that have a stake in this with our family resource centers. So if these 25 institutional leaders can't get something done together, then we're in trouble. And that's the reason why we created this regional collaboration. And every single one of them are at the table because their board recognized that this was a priority. They dedicated their top leaders, both elected and staff. And they also have dedicated a resource in some way, whether it be dollars, land, or policy, or a combination of both. So with that, we have accomplished quite a bit. And this presentation is outlined to help you kind of go a little bit deeper on this, but we've begun to really define what achievable housing looks like, and we're going to talk about that. We've begun to set goals and targets. We have one of the first regional maps of public land in this region, looking at it as more of a chessboard or an ecosystem. We are exploring creative housing types. We're looking at new funding and finance models out there, as well as existing ones that we're just not accessing. And finally, we're hosting a number of educational events, and today we'll talk to you about that as well.
Okay, so, sorry. Let's scoot over. What defines housing? These are some of the definitions that this group has come to. And when you've got 25 people with all kinds of interest and ideas working together, really the foundation of definitions, we felt, was an important first step. So the region is clear. It's the same boundary as the school district. So it does include a little bit of Eldorado County, just south of Tahoma, where Placer County's line ends, includes the Town of Truckee, a portion of Nevada County, and all of really what we consider to be eastern Placer County. One important anecdote I will give you and why we felt it was something we had to do in defining different types of uses is regarding the word "unit." So every single jurisdiction in the region has a different term. So Nevada County says you have to have a kitchen in order to be considered a housing unit. Placer County doesn't go quite that detailed. In fact, in some of our housing plans, we allow bedrooms to be considered units. So housing people can even be a pillow or a bed. So there were a lot of different ways we did that. And what we decided to do, because we couldn't really come to an agreement on that, was that the unit is defined by the jurisdiction in which a project or discussion is happening. So we really wanted to make sure that every jurisdiction felt that its place and its viewpoint on housing could move forward and wasn't going to be tied down by anything that was a regional objective. And I think diversity is another important thing to highlight. So we're looking at affordable housing and workforce housing, but also just housing for residents. So you don't have to be part of the workforce to need housing in our community. So it really goes across the spectrum, interdependent of income type or family structure, lifestyle, et cetera. So we're trying to really cover the biggest picture of housing when we're looking at what our mission is to achieve improvement in the housing.
And along that note on the diversity piece, it's really to be able to address those who live in our community who can't work, who are unable to. Either they're retired, elderly, or disabled. And so we want to capture that spectrum, and that's the next piece of this, which is, you know, that blue section of this chart was given to us in the needs assessment. And you know that those are the categories that are dictated us by the Housing and Urban Development Department of our federal agency. And it really is what qualifies for some of those subsidized types of financing that we look to when we're trying to build housing. But what we learned from our needs assessment, and what we continue to learn as we walk through the community, is we're talking about an expanded definition of what affordable is for our locals and for our workforce. And so what became apparent as we went into these conversations with the different special districts and our corporate partners is we need to expand on this in order to address that missing middle. And that missing middle is on the trajectory for growth, because that's a big piece of what we need, not only to have the diversified economic development and employees that we need in this community, but it tends to kind of help us show that there's a bigger spectrum that we're talking about. And we recognize that those green areas, those additional areas that are now potentially at 150 to 180%, that's really what's in conversation right now, is what's the right leap into those next categories? What makes sense? Is then this gives the regional agencies and the regional organizations at the table more solid ground on how to design programming policies and seek or structure new funding. So we believe that as the council, if we can collectively adopt an expanded version, and thank you Supervisor Montgomery for giving us the achievable term, we get out of the conversation of, are you talking about Section 8 housing? Is it only affordable? What about the missing middle? Understanding the complexity of types of money, capital, that build on these different layers. And so it really helps us get more nuanced in our approach and our strategy.
So I wanted to include this slide in here. The council has not acted on this yet, but it considered it at its last meeting. We'll probably do some fine tuning on some of these figures here before it goes to the council. But one thing I think it's important for your board to see, because this may come before you in the future for recommendation, is that the blue segments, the ones that you typically see in state and federal vernacular, extremely low, very low, low and moderate, are things that we can find funding for today, whether it's state or federal grants or other funding opportunities. So if we are to grow this achievable housing definition, to include the missing middle, county employees, firefighters, teachers, people we think are important to live in the community, it may be incumbent on the local government to assist through networking with the mountain council or other opportunities to identify funding for developing housing for these different kinds of income strata. So it's something that will be important for you to consider as we go forward in just defining what is achievable housing in eastern Placer County.
Very good. You're next. There we go. Next, we have our proposed goals and targets. And again, these haven't been voted on, but it gives you a sense of what kind of collaborative action plan we're putting together and how we'll measure success. And going back to how do you define a unit is, you know, kind of one of the things that will dictate the metrics that we all agree upon. And so we are looking at things like, first and foremost, being able to create some innovative, game-changing policy solutions. And an expanded definition of achievable housing might just be a game changer when it comes to that. Who knows what it can unlock from there? But really pushing us to think about long-term systemic shifts within this region so that we're not just building new homes and unlocking existing homes, but setting forwards some policy that can really carry us beyond three years. Increased percentage of workers living in the area, recognizing that there's a significant commuter population, and we have that baseline data captured in the needs assessment. So can we change that so that even 1% of our population isn't leaving, but is able to live here and work here? Unlocking existing structures for local housing, recognizing that the tourist-based economy is incredibly important to this region, and our second homeowners are a part of our community. And yet, we recognize that some of these houses actually sit vacant more than 90% of the time. And I think it was to your point several meetings ago, you know, how do we begin to unlock some of those? And so really questioning and pushing ourselves in that. Seeking new units, additional funding, renovating alternative structures for housing. And this is where I might also bring up, one of our partners is the Prosperity Center. There are connection to the bigger basin kind of strategy that's happening, as well as TRPA. So while we're focused in this region, we do have partners who represent that bigger basin, and they've really been focused on renovating alternative structures. And finally, upgrading from substandard. So we recognize we also can unlock through looking at some of the substandard housing.
Okay, so we've got a series of maps here. Stacy mentioned that we did a mapping exercise, and we mapped the entire region so far to identify all of the publicly-held properties. Because one of the concepts, as we've been talking with the community about the needs assessment, is the cost of housing is really what's driving development of housing away, other than the vacation rental, single-family resident market. And we think that that's why that segment of the market has been so strong, while the rest of the market, any kind of multifamily development, has not been strong. So one thought was that if we had at least publicly-held property, that could drive down the cost of the land acquisition. That's a big piece of the cost of developing housing, we know. So I've got some copies here of the maps for Placer County. And as you can imagine, eastern Placer County is pretty big. So it's on seven slides. I'm just going to flip through them and show some examples. On this first slide, in the Section A quadrant, I believe this is actually the property in Serene Lakes. It's owned by Placer County. Was initially being held for Public Works Corporation Yard. We don't know yet if it is absolutely zoned appropriately. We believe it is. The seven maps that I have for you today encompass 144 properties that are held by Placer County in the region. And after going through them with housing staff, Supervisor Montgomery, and our GIS staff, we believe that 83 of those may have potential for housing development. So this is one of them. This next section in quadrant B is the Kings Beach State Line area. Of course, here, there's a lot of junk on this map, so it's hard to see, and I apologize for that. But it's the easiest way to look at it, believe it or not. This is Kings Beach, so you see that locus to the right there. Those are all of the former redevelopment agency properties. And they're all zoned for allowing housing. We think that there might be one site that has a potential for use for housing, including mixed use. So it'd be housing on the top, and then retail or other use on the bottom floor. So that, plus a lot of other properties. You'll notice as I flip through these maps, some teeny-tiny properties that you can barely see. And those are really residential lots that we may own in areas. Some of them are former residential lots that have been purchased for use for drainage. So one of the things we wonder, could we do the drainage underneath, like we did with the Kings Beach streetscape, and build maybe a single-family residence that could be where we could continue to own the land? And the property or the homeowner could just own the building? So those are some of the creative issues that have come up as we've looked at these maps. And there, C, I don't know. Sorry, I can't tell if that one is Tahoe Vista or not. There's Dollar Hill. So that big green glob is actually the property that we acquired from the North Tahoe Public Utility District, who was initially purchased with Conservancy funds. So it looks like a big, great opportunity. But I will say with this property, if we were to put anything on there other than recreation, we'd have to buy a portion or perhaps all of that property by paying fair market value to draw down the cost of the original purchase. So that may be challenging, even though it looks really tempting. But it's not totally off the list. And we've got some other properties toward the east. Again, those are a lot of residential properties, or maybe easements that we have purchased for water quality improvements. Same with some of the smaller residential properties here. So I just wanted to give you a first feel for what we're looking at with these maps and the publicly-held properties. And Stacy's going to talk a little bit more about some of the other efforts that are underway.
Great. And as you can see, it's easy to put together a map, but then going through each of these parcels and really determining, you know, why isn't it currently being used? And is it really viable for housing? Almost every solution we come through, we have to do that hard work together. Again, whether it's the definition of affordable housing, or can't we just change this fee structure? And so at the council, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're educated, so that our public and our community are educated, because we want their ideas to bubble up. We want them to go forward. But we also recognize that there's reasons why we are here. And that's just such a good example. On funding and financing, we're just beginning this work. The community foundation has a broader agenda in attracting resources to this region and thinking differently about capital. And so the housing work is a perfect opportunity for us to do that. And it's everything from different financing models and investors who might take more patient capital, lower returns if it has the social and environmental impact that they're looking for. But also looking for the existing types of funding out there at the state, the federal levels. Talking to our employers and other community agencies about supporting their employees in unique ways. And you'll hear more about that. So we have a tiger team that's dedicated to it. It's just mobilizing. And there's a Rural Housing Conference coming up here in about two weeks. And a big portion of that conference is going to be dedicated to some of these capital and financial models for housing. And so we're excited. We have a significant contingency now going from our region, which is good, because it means we're building the muscle and educating ourselves on those things. And then looking at creative housing types. And again, it's another piece of educating ourselves. We have a webinar coming up in which somebody from Aspen is going to be presenting their work on manufactured, mobile-type solutions for their seasonal workers. And so a lot of our employers are curious about that.
Here comes the fun stuff. Let me see if I can make this work. Jeremy?
So to cue this up, this is a video of one of
He's controlling it.
One of our local employers who's taking matters into his own hands. And we're finding more and more of these kinds of individuals who are trying to create solutions directly for their employees. So we thought we'd share this with you. It's just about three minutes.
Hi, I'm Dave Wolderhanner. Hi, I'm Dave Wolderhanner. I own Tahoe Dig Season Boards. This is our 40th season in Tahoe. In the summertime, we generally have 35 to 40 employees. And the winter, when we gear out all of our other stores, we're at between 100 and 125. Employee housing has always, has always been interesting. Lately, it's gotten even more interesting. Because when people call, they want to move to Tahoe to work for us, one of our first questions is not, how old are your employee? Are you going to be? But do you have housing? Well, there's a bunch of different ways that we've been working at it. We have friends that have houses that have duplexes or extra rooms. And then what we do is find those friends of ours. And then we guarantee that if they hire one of our employees, rent will be paid. We pay our employees well. We keep raising the bar on what employees make so they can afford to live up here. That reflects a little bit on our pricing, but if you don't have employees, it doesn't matter what you charge. So that's another way. Helping with deposits is big. When people move to town, they need money for deposits. The other thing we're doing is helping with loans for managers and employees that want to buy houses. They might have some family money, but don't have a down payment. So we will loan our employees the money. Maybe not all of it, maybe part of it, depending on if it's realistic for them to afford it. And we vet the employees as, you really can't afford this house. We've put six employees at this point into Truckee Affordable Logic, which is phenomenal. Truckee's doing a great job of that. The next thing we've done, and this is recent, is we start purchasing properties with the idea that they would then become employee housing. For us, it can be affordable to the employee because we don't have a profit incentive as much as our profit comes from renting skis, and that comes from having employees. The next thing we've done is we bought a trailer park in Truckee with the idea that we can make this nice enough for employees and the people living there. We're all in this together, whether it's business or just your neighbors. Or if we don't have people living in town and all we have are tourists, we really don't have a town. So my advice is to, if you can, help your employees with deposits. Help your employees with a solution. Potentially pay them more money. Money, it doesn't seem to be as big an issue now as availability. So if you can't afford to buy some houses, do that. It would keep It would keep it in our stock. You've got to turn your brain around and say, "I'm not buying this house as an investment in the house. I'm buying this house as an investment in my employees. And I'll make my money on them, not the house." Eventually, maybe I can even turn that house over to a good employee, and then I got a after ever.
Pretty powerful, huh? This video is going viral, and Dave is just really being held up as a hero in our community, because he just keeps coming at it and coming at it in every different way that the different employees need. From putting down a deposit, to helping them structure a loan, to buying homes, to buying a mobile home park. And so, we're uncovering more people like Dave, and we're uncovering more programs that can help people like Dave. And so, our next public think-tank is going to really focus on solutions for our employers and the things we've uncovered. We can't cover everything in our Mountain Housing Council meetings, but we learn a lot in the in-between. And we're trying to make sure that everything that we encounter, that somebody gives to us as another solution, that we put it somewhere. It finds its way to the community, it finds its way to the right stakeholder, so that we can really continue to mobilize those solutions. So, with that, questions and feedback?
Any questions from any member of the board? Kirk?
Yes, couple of questions. On the maps, where you have all the dots, especially the Kings Beach area, I'm curious as to, and you just, you did have the disclaimer of the one larger parcel that we got from the conservancy that wouldn't qualify. But, how many of these properties, do we analyze, how many of these properties have existing development rights, as opposed to those who would have to go through the TRPA, the transfer of the development rights process of TRPA?
We haven't done that level of analysis yet. We have looked at whether they're zoned properly, or whether they have potential for changing zoning easily. Are they readily accessible to transit? Do they have utilities nearby, or other things that you would need for developable land? We don't know on the development rights yet. You can purchase development rights-
Right.
...through the conservancy, but are they available on government properties? Likely not.
Right. And that's what I'm wondering, is while on the one hand, we're saying, we might overcome a barrier to affordability by making public land available. Does the land have the existing development right? Or do you have to go and pay the money to acquire that, as opposed to just somebody in the market buying a piece of property that already has existing rights?
Right. And residential development rights are going for about $8,000 per right now. Although, I will point out, if it's deed-restricted affordable housing, you don't need a development right or a residential allocation.
That's a great segue to my next question-
Great.
...comment, which is, we talk about, in terms of the cost of housing, which is clearly a barrier. However, the market approaches it from the standpoint of the profitability of affording housing. And can I build something affordably, whether it is affordable housing or market-rate housing? And what are my barriers to that? Turnaround, what are the opportunities to create more affordability? Well, we know clearly, through our experience everywhere else, everywhere else in Placer County, other than the Tahoe Basin, that the easiest way to provide affordable housing is to jam as many units you can onto as small a piece of property as you can, and let them go up. And so, are we looking in the basin at opportunities for affordable housing in traditional apartment style, where we're going a little more vertical? And obviously, coming into some issues that are prevalent in the Tahoe area when you go vertical. But, that's one of our barriers, is we don't allow people to go up. So, are we having that conversation? Because that's simply reverse-engineering the math to say, if I can go six floors, how many 1,300-square-foot, three-bedroom units can I get? Or two-bedroom units can I get on six floors vertical? And what's my cost to construct, assuming certain things? And then, where can I price-point them in the marketplace? And can I deliver? From a profitability standpoint, can I deliver that for you? So, are we looking at those things that are currently impediments to providing affordable housing here, the way it's traditional, or workforce housing here, the way it's traditionally met outside of the basin?
Yes. So, TRPA is one of the representatives on the Mountain Housing Council, John Hester, who's their chief operating officer. And TRPA's been pretty engaged in the housing question. It's difficult to change their regulations. We, our area plan that was recently passed, had a lot of allowances for housing that didn't exist in previous area plans that we had, or really anywhere else in the basin. So, we do have some potential. It's better than it was, but it's still not perfect. I sit on a Development Commodities Working Group with some governing board members and other stakeholders. And one of the things we're talking about is increasing the amount of affordability that would make you eligible for a free development right in a residential allocation. It's currently at 80% and lower. So, we know that, based on the conversation we just had, this missing middle is a big part of what we need. So, increasing that to 120, 150, maybe even 180 or higher, or something that, a conversation we just had a few weeks ago. So, they're doing that analysis and looking for ways where they can change their code that would be acceptable under the environmental constraints or regulations that we're under. There are density bonuses for affordable housing that you can get. So, you can put more density on a property than you would otherwise be allowed to, if it's workforce or affordable. You can have more coverage in some cases. The height is still limited at 56 feet, so that is a challenge. And at some point, you're going to max out on even 56 feet. So, I think you bring up some important points. We just had a meeting with a potential developer last week, and he was trying to figure out what can he put on his property, because he wants to do workforce housing in the Tahoe Basin. And so, he's going to go back and do some number crunching, and come back and figure out if he can make his project work or not. But, you raise some good points about the challenges we have before us, for sure.
My only comment on that question is also, for the first time, as we look at a regional map, we also have the ability to be strategic about where things fall, where it's going to be easier than other areas. It doesn't mean we should give up the fight to get the density, but at the same time, there's probably areas within our region that are going to be easier to pass that kind of density. And those are the conversations we're wading into as a community. It's not easy, because we want to protect what we've got. But, at the same time, to your point, it's the way that we can kind of get to the solutions faster as well. And those alternative housing solutions are also looking at different ways of putting together, you know, fee structures that are associated with smaller square footages, that type of thing.
The, I guess the only other comment I would make is, as we, in public comment this morning, as we heard from somebody who's looking to actually limit the VRBO opportunities, or the short-term rental opportunities. Quite candidly, I think the best way that you could create a market for longer-term rental opportunities is to actually flood the market with short-term. Because then, it drives down what the market can sustain, in terms of your price per night, and makes it less affordable for more people to have more of those on. And so, it pushes more people toward that point of saying, would it actually economically be to my advantage to do a six-month rental during the winter season, when I'm not going to be up here? Because what I can get for a six-month rental, essentially guaranteed income for six months, versus rolling the dice on now $125 a night, whereas I used to be $200 a night, but since there are enough of these on the market, forget it. Now, I'm going this direction. I'm going, if I'm going to be up for rent anyway, what guarantees me the income versus rolling the dice on the night of the rental? And, the market has proven, time and time again, that more competition drives down that price, which means that I, as the person providing it, now am in a position of having to say, do I want to make my commodity available at such a low price with such a high potential risk factor? So, I know some people might not want to hear that, but-
But, it's your opinion.
Supervisor Yular, just to get back to your initial question about development in the basin, one of the real reasons that we created this regional map is because we recognize the incredible challenges of developing in the basin. And so, what we said is, you know, what can Nevada County bring on their public lands? What can the town of Truckee bring? What can we in Placer County bring in, you know, areas that we haven't necessarily thought about in the past? So, we looked Marter's Valley, Alpine, Squaw, Donner Summit. We identified a really enormously large parcel, and then went, oh, wait, that's the dump. So, you know, but, but, I mean, we're literally looking at all of it and trying to make some decisions. And I want to really shout out to our partners in the local special districts. One of my tasks on the tiger team, I'm on, which is a mapping tiger team, is to go through district by district and say, okay, you guys have a piece of property. Is there anything on it? Do you have a future use for it? Could we potentially use it? So, for example, North Tahoe Fire. I sat down with one of the captains from North Tahoe Fire and discovered, not unsurprisingly, that everything they own has a working fire station on it. So, the likelihood that we're going to build something where there is already an active fire station is pretty minimal. But, we did identify, for the various special districts, some possibilities. And so, it's really, I think, broadening our perspective and broadening the regional approach to it, is going to be one of the game changers about addressing the issue moving forward. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any member of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Dave, did you want to say something? You're sitting very quietly, your video was fabulous.
No, thank you. I was just here to do some more thinking about this.
Okay, excellent. All right, please come forward.
Hi there, again, Michelle Hagan. I had two thoughts. If 65% of the housing is vacant or used infrequently, we need to, I think we need to do a survey of people like myself, who are homeowners, who actually provide workforce housing for local and long-term employees. And I read through the housing study, I happen to have an undergraduate degree in city planning, and there isn't any data from the homeowners, the property owners. I mean, what is their opinion of this? Is there some way we can incentivize people to repurpose their homes? Instead, repurposing, is it, if we have 33,000 units in the basin, if 65% of that, if my math's right, isn't it 18,000 or 19,000 units? I mean, maybe we can get a percentage of that to be used towards workforce housing. Instead of going the development route, which takes years to develop a property, and it's costly, I would just encourage the Mountain Housing Council and the board to consider and to ask homeowners like myself, what's your opinion? Will you open up your homes? What would incentivize you? Is it a subsidy, a tax credit, or what?
And Supervisor Yular actually brought that very issue up at our last board meeting here in Tahoe, and that is sort of on our plate for the Mountain Housing Council.
Right. I mean, I think all of us should be looking at, including the Resort Association and the other entities. So, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Please come forward.
My name's Ron Trebus. I work with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. You know, those people also have to clean more often and pay the expense of rent or short-term rental abuse. What I wanted to just do, and I don't think I need to give it much, is encourage the county to keep up this great pace that you have going now in working on housing. Back just after the turn of the century, in the early days, we did get going with some workforce housing concerns, and got a few units built here in Kings Beach, and Truckee got some built in there. And then, it kind of shifted into redevelopment, and then it went with redevelopment, I think. But now, it's come back, and through the leadership of the Mountain Housing Council and all these agencies, and particularly Placer County, we're now on a roll. And this community, as I was saying to Supervisor Holmes at the beginning of the meeting, gets involved in something. And it seems like there's a greater level of involvement in a small community sometimes than in the large communities, when you don't know who your next-door neighbor is. And last week was our, the Resort Association Chamber's annual luncheon, and we had just about 100 people in this building here with the program on housing. Both Jennifer and Stacy, as well as Dave, gave presentations, and a couple of other people. And that whole group came out of there, in fact, they didn't want to quit when Cindy started to say, "Okay, let's go home." They said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, we have more questions." And it became a question-answer panel type of an interest, that people had heard about housing needs, but they didn't really realize the opportunities, such as Dave suggested, of getting involved. And I think that's the way we're going. And to continue to have the support of Placer and the other organizations for the private people who are now saying, "There are things we can do," is going to really give us an opportunity for making a difference, because we have the funding and the interest from all sectors coming forward. So, thank you guys much, and stay with it.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions or comments on this, before I bring it back to the board? Okay? Seeing none, any other questions or comments from the board? This was just an update. Jennifer, Stacy, thank you very much. Very comprehensive, much appreciated. I'm sure some or all of us will have follow-up questions we'll be tracking you down for.
Stacy also has a handout that she's going to give to Megan, that was the placemat from the last Mountain Housing Council meeting, gives you an idea of the partners who were at the table and the issues that were discussed.
All right, we're going to move to Agenda Item 6D. This is a presentation on the proposed formation of a tourist-based improvement district in Olympic Valley. Jennifer Merchant will be presenting.
Yes, hello again, Jennifer here. So, this is an informational update on the proposed Squaw Valley-Alpine Meadows Tourist-Based Improvement District. Before I click onto the next slide, some of you may be wondering where this picture came from. And it is actually a picture of Squaw Valley Road during the 1960 Winter Olympics. So, it's something that Eric Paulson had passed along to Squaw Valley folks, and they've used it as the cover of their proposal. And I just love it, because it really gives us a reminder that we've had traffic in this region for quite some time. So, here we are, stuck in traffic in Squaw Valley. So, it's really the genesis of the proposal at hand today. So, let me start from the beginning on what is a tourist-based improvement district. Placer County, unincorporated portion of Placer County anyway, has not been exposed to a tourist-based improvement district. I understand that there is one that the cities have engaged in for funding certain activities related to marketing. There are about 100 such districts throughout the state of California. The first one was created in Hollywood in 1989, for marketing specifically. They're usually for marketing. There are a few in the state of California that are used for transportation. There's one that's used for a trolley that kind of runs around to the businesses. But, most of them are for marketing. This proposal is a little bit different, in that it does propose to assess users of our tourist economy for the purposes of transit, specifically micro-mass transit. And that's what some of these districts are now being called in California. I know, micro-mass, so confusing, exactly, chumpo shrim. That's right. Micro-mass Transit District. I know there's another one like that too, but I can't come up with it right now. Yeah. I bet you have a long list. You want to go through it now?
Keep going, Kirk, come on.
So, a micro-mass transit district, which is basically acknowledging that it's providing transit at a micro level to a smaller community, usually transit we think of as a regional thing, connecting regions. And this is very specific-
So, it doesn't mean very tiny vehicles?
No, they're not tiny.
Okay.
You guys have been here too long. Do we need a lunch break? Okay, so, it's a mass, micro-mass transit district, or a T-Bid, is, either one is formed pursuant to Property and Business Improvement District law. So, you've heard about bids and BADS. There is a benefit assessment district in Kings Beach. We've talked about creating one in Tahoe City for the purposes of maintaining the Fanny Bridge project there, as well as the improvements to Highway 28. And that's the law that allows for this tourist-based improvement district to be formed. I would like to point out one thing in my staff report that was not correct. I called it a tax, it's actually a benefit assessment, so it's not a tax, levied really specifically for the purposes of serving those who are assessed. That's what makes it different than a tax or other districts that you may even be familiar with. So, the funds are returned to the new district for expenditure. The new district is a dependent, not an independent entity. It is going to be, would be composed of homeowners' associations, representative from the resorts, and the community. and the community, the districts, or excuse me, the businesses that would be served, and also have community representatives on the board, including a representative from Placer County. The district does have to comply with the Brown Act, so it's a little bit of a hybrid compared to other government organizations you might have been exposed to. So, the specific proposal that we have received in our office, and, and I know the board's office has received it as well, is for 1% benefit assessment to all gross lodging receipts in the Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows community. So, it would form the district for purposes of allocating those funds to benefit the properties assessed and benefit the people paying the assessment. The proposal is to operate a shuttle system that would go into the neighborhoods. So, it's a little bit different than what we provide with TART, although it's been mentioned multiple times in different transit plans, including the Tourism Development Master Plan and, and previous TART plans. It's not something that, that we have planned for ourselves in, in Placer County. We expect that the, the district would raise about $410,000. That's about 1% of the TOT collected in that area. And the, the service that they've proposed would also include money from the private sector. Squaw Valley Ski Holdings has committed to providing funding up to $165,000 for a total service operating budget of $575,000 per year. It is possible that the district could be expanded in the future. The initial proposal that we discussed with the proponents several months ago included, in fact, participation from Placer County. But because we were engaged in conversations with the Resort Association, we didn't have a way to allocate funds and could not make that commitment that was consistent with the schedule that they wanted. So, they decided to go forward with a smaller service budget, and they can grow it in the future if, if others concur, including Placer County and your board. So, the way these districts work is that they're created for a five-year term, and they can be extended after that five years for periods of 10 years into the future. So, that is what the proposal states right now. I do want to, to give you a little bit more detail on this shuttle system. It, it would go in a, and, you know, a series of continuous loops through Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows. And people can contact the system via their smartphone, or via any other phone for that matter, and ask to have it deviated up to their house so that the next time the bus passes their house, it would stop in that area and pick them up. So, it's what is called in the, in the transit system lingo is deviated route. So, it goes off of the regular route. And that's how it provides more of a, kind of like an Uber shuttle-like experience where you can call and get it sent to your house. I do want to point out here too, that, that in the proposal, as allowed by law, Placer County could retain 1% of the total collections for the purposes of administering the revenue and allocating it back to the district. So, here are the proposed district boundaries. You see that it is really focused around Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows, all to the, I guess, from that direction, it's to the west of, of Highway 89, and encompasses all of the neighborhoods so that it's not just the lodging properties that are the hotels that would be served. It also provides collection opportunity for the short-term rentals that are in the residential neighborhoods so that it can serve those neighborhoods. Some of the benefits of the T-bid is that the funds are spent on services that provide a specific benefit. So, you can assume that the folks who are paying for that benefit want to continue it, and after five years, I guess, they would know because they have an opportunity to extend it at that time. But it's something that people are paying for what they want. It's customized to fit the needs of the district. As I mentioned, different districts do different things. You can have transit, you can have marketing, you can do streetlights, as well as other things, depending on what your district wants to do. It does provide a stable funding source for the kinds of services that they want. Certainly, the more partners they get in, maybe the less stable the source is. But they could provide a minimum floor of service with the, the revenue that they would be collecting into the district. Also, I did want to point out that Placer County would be represented on the board, and your board would have the opportunity to appoint that board member. And they must comply with open meeting law and the Public Records Act. So, they do have public records and a public process that they'd be required to utilize. So, some of the genesis of this, other than the traffic jam I showed you from 1960, is competing with our peer resorts. So, this is from a study that was completed by Lee Scott and Cleary as we did our transportation consultants, as we did our TART systems plan. And you really see that we are, I'd say falling behind, but we are behind and have been for as long as I've been around, some of our competitive resorts in the Mountain West, including even Mammoth Lakes in California. So, you know, Vale, Aspen, Summit County can carry between 2 million and 4 million passengers a year because they provide a higher level of service with extended hours, service into the neighborhoods for some, but not all of these systems. And the TART ridership this, last year was just over 357,000 riders. So, it's actually a good ridership, and it has continued to grow over the years, along with the frequency and hours of operation. But the service that TART provides does not go into the neighborhoods. I, I will say, I don't think that's going to increase ridership by a significant amount, but that's one of the things that the, the group would like to test. And they did test a, a similar system during the, the period of, of the holiday last year, as well as during the World Cup. So, they know that the system has some interest, and there, there were people who used it, parked and actually got in the shuttle and went to Squaw Valley. Some of the issues that your board will want to consider, and this is a short list, there, there may be more. The proposed shuttle system is not included in the TART systems plan. So, often when your board is, is making policy or, or expenditure or legal decisions, there's a plan or something that, that roots you in that decision-making, and that, that doesn't exist in this case. The proposed shuttle service is not identified as a Tier 1 priority in the Tourism Master Plan, although it is listed as a Tier 2 priority. We have not implemented all the Tier 1 priorities. And there, there's nothing that says you can't do Tier 1 before Tier 2. In fact, we've done it on multiple occasions with capital projects, but it is something to consider. The expansion that I referenced earlier would require support from Placer County. One of the expansions that was in the original proposal included service that was provided to the town of Truckee. And to date, your board has stated its desire to not provide extended service to the town of Truckee unless and until the town of Truckee participates in funding that. And that wouldn't be the case here. And it's, you know, somebody else's money and somebody else's decision at that point, but something I think that you'd want to consider. The revenue cannot be spent on general government services, and there's a reason I bring this up. Most of the, the additional peak season service that's contemplated in the TART systems plan, as well as the Tourism Master Plan, is funded with TOT. That revenue source can be funded, can be utilized for a variety of things, including mitigating tourism and attracting visitors. So, this funding source could only be used for the, the service that was determined by the board. So, it cannot, it would, there would be no kind of 60%, 40% share, as, as Erin had discussed earlier in her presentation. The service plan and ridership goals aren't quite clearly outlined. Again, there's going to be a different body managing these funds, and that will be up to that body to make that determination. I think what I described to you as a deviated shuttle service in the neighborhoods is about the detail that, that we have. I do know what the budget is, but I haven't seen a specific service plan at this point. One of the things that, that comes with not knowing all that information is not knowing about compliance with ADA or other transit standards. This entity would not be a public transit agency. It would be private in, in its, in the streets and highways code. So, it wouldn't have to meet the same level of the standard that Placer County does for Federal Transit Administration standards, but we believe it does have to comply with other standards such as ADA. And this is one of multiple regional revenue strategies that is being considered for Eastern Placer County. And it's possible that this could have impacts on the total capacity for increasing any kind of assessment or tax on lodging or other tourism services that are provided. So, that's something that your board may want to consider. In addition, it, it could have impacts on service connection with TART. We're not sure if it is, it connects with that, or if it's disconnected with that, and maybe it just doesn't matter. We don't know. So, I do want to talk a little bit about this regional revenue strategy because it was something that, that Erin discussed this morning, and, and we talked about the, the revenue that we're working with host compliance to collect. We know that there are needs that far outweigh our ability to fund and implementing the Tourism Master Plan right now. I, I'm going to speak in rough numbers, roughly $100 million in capital projects that are outlined in the Tourism Master Plan for the next eight years. And so, we've talked with the community, we've talked with the Resort Association about the potential for extending the existing TOT, which sunsets in 2022, or potentially even increasing that TOT to a higher rate. We do know that we are more than competitive. In fact, our TOT rate is much lower than most of our competitors, even in the town of Truckee has an additional T-bid that it charges a higher rate than we do in Eastern Placer County, City of South Lake Tahoe. Most, if not all, of the mountain resorts in the west charge a higher rate. So, we know there's capacity, but we're not quite sure what that capacity is and what mix of potential revenue sources could be used. We're working on a strategy, and a big part of that is the first series of meetings we're going to be having, having with the public in November, asking them what kinds of funding strategies are they interested in employing for what kinds of services or capital projects in the region. We did agree with the Resort Association to convene those meetings in early November to look at funding for trails, for transit, for arts and culture, other projects. And housing is something that has come up time and time again in the last year, and I think you heard a bit of that today, interest in using tourism taxes or assessments to offset some of the housing challenges we have. Also, our CEO has been participating with other executives in the region in a by-state consultation process, talking about how we make some real improvements to transit and transportation, specifically in the basin, and as the Tahoe Basin connects into the greater region outside of the basin and even including Reno all the way down to the San Francisco Bay Area. And they're looking at funding options and how we really crack this nut on transit and large-scale capital projects. So, we've got a lot to think of when it comes to revenue sources, this being one of potential many sources and needs in the community. And so, that's something I think that, that your board will want to also consider, how it plays against some of these other opportunities. The timeline that's proposed by the group, I've, I've received a couple of these because it's been admittedly a little challenging for us to respond to the request, never having worked with an entity to organize a T-bid before. We do believe that we've come up with something that seems like it meets our timing needs on one end, our board schedule on the other, and then also the needs of the proponents. We think that within the next week, we will receive a completed petition submitted to the county. And that petition means that they've got a cover letter that says, we want to create a tourist-based improvement district or a micro-mass transit district. And they would, would, along with that, include more than 50% of the total TOT collectors in the area voting yes. So, that petition will be a yes petition signed by them. We think that could be submitted with the next, within the next week. If it is submitted within the next week, we could go to board hearing for your board to consider a resolution of intention, which is the next step in the process that needs to occur on November 29th. Then the following day, we would notice a future public hearing. The public meeting would happen on December 12th. No action happens at that meeting, but there would be discussion at that meeting about the proposal. And then the public hearing would occur on January 9th that could include adoption of the resolution of formation. That means your board agreeing that this district can be formed, should be formed, and that we will facilitate anything administratively that it takes to do, do so. If, if that schedule all holds true, the district can begin collecting its assessment on February 1st. At this point, I know that was a lot of information. I'm happy to provide additional information, answer questions, take direction, et cetera.
Supervisor Yular.
If you go back two slides to the regional revenue strategy?
Yes.
So, the one thing that I'm not seeing under future regional revenue strategy is T-bid being discussed for transit-related purposes. I see you've got it illustrated up there for regional marketing, but I've had conversations with folks who are interested in looking at a regional T-bid proposal that would specifically address transit-related issues. And that's important for me in the context of considering the, what do we call it, micro-mass And that is the ability of the two to integrate properly, even, even with the existing TART service that we have, the ability to integrate. While this proposal will probably be successful in, in limiting vehicle trips within Squaw Valley, within Alpine Meadows, maybe between Squaw and Alpine Meadows, although hopefully a new tram will take care of that. The, the real issue, as far as I'm concerned, is getting vehicles off of 89, both northbound to Truckee and southbound to, to Tahoe City. And, and this proposal, and they acknowledge, and this, I expressed this concern to them when, when we met, this proposal does nothing to do that. And so, I really want to see how in the future, when we have opportunities for sharing transit, if you will, between the mass micro and maybe a larger regional, how that works. And does, does, does getting on a bus in Tahoe City only to have to get off a bus at the 7-Eleven in order to wait for another bus and get on another bus that takes you from the 7-Eleven into the valley? Does that create enough of an impediment to where people simply aren't using the regional solution that we might come up with in the future? So, I just want to make sure that we have appropriate flexibility moving forward to actually figure out what ultimately moves us in the direction of getting people from where they are outside of the valley and the meadows and to, to those facilities. And if there's anything that we need to be aware of going into the creation of this, should we choose to do so, that would prohibit us from making modifications in the future, I'd really like for us to know that upfront.
Yes, and I have had those conversations with the proponents. I have heard to date that they have an interest of, in, you know, working regionally. It's hard to see that without it, you know, written on paper somewhere. And maybe I'm being too much of a bureaucrat by wanting to see a, an operational plan or, or something. I know that they have an interest potentially in getting kind of swallowed up by a bigger effort should one happen. Now, I can say that we have talked about with the Resort Association, a T-bid for marketing, and I think the conversation was putting one in place for marketing potentially to free up more money for transit. I don't know that I understood, or at least that I've had a conversation about a T-bid for transit. It seems like that district would be then, I don't know if they'd be operating TART or adding to TART. Certainly, the TART systems plan provides that.
A, a, a fair distinction of the, the freeing up of the dollars.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
Robert?
Okay, if I use my microphone?
Yeah, please feel free.
Yeah, so I echo that to some extent. I thought you were going to hit me. So, I, you know, I know we have a short fuse on this particular thing, and I don't want to preclude any effort from having an opportunity, but, but I'm curious that I echo. any effort from having an opportunity, but I'm curious that I echo Kirk's concerns about, seems like there must be some templates in other places where a more regional comprehensive strategy has been broken down into more of these micro perspectives. Besides just any work that we can do between now and then to get us some feedback on that would be helpful for me.
Any other questions or comments from any board member? Supervisor Holmes?
I don't have any problem with this. Just got to work the details out and look forward to some more input and more discussion later on.
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions from the board, I will open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment on this agenda item? Please come forward. Wow, you have a bright red ball off your elbow.
Yeah.
I'm Keith Fountain. You can call me Jumbo Shrimp from now on if you wanted to.
Thank you, Kirk.
I'm pleased to be here today, to actually be here with you folks and continue the dialogue on this project. And I'd very much like to thank Jennifer Merchant and Placer County staff. They've helped advise and guide us through this T-bid. It's a new experience for everybody, and it's been very helpful. I want to leave you with a few points of consideration here. Just, they'll relate to much of what Jennifer said, things that I would like to have you think about a little bit more. Without a shuttle service in our resort community, Squaw Alpine is at a competitive disadvantage in an increasingly competitive business. So it hurts all of us not to have an intravalley shuttle. The 2015 Tourism Plan Market Conditions Assessment, I think we saw a chart appear already on that, highlights five areas and rival ski areas that are far superior offerings and transit offerings than we are here in North Lake Tahoe. And we look at that to say, that's another statement that Squaw Valley doesn't have in place what it should to be competitive. And it's acknowledged in the Tourism Plan, even though it doesn't say MMTD, although MMTD is not explicitly cited in the plan. Tier-two priorities for transportation call for shuttles in ski areas and call for lodging properties to participate. That's us. We feel the project is an immediate priority, and it was interesting to hear Jennifer comment that sometimes you move those priorities, and that's when you're spending the money, but I guess I'm pitching it from the point of view, we're going to spend the money, so why not switch them? So we're implicitly in the plan and not asking for money to be part of the plan. Our T-bid proposes that the HOA's levy a modest 1% assessment, as was pointed out. Considering the competitive norms for such levies on accommodation, it's, I believe, 14% nationally and 8% to 15% regionally, per some studies we did and some anecdotal reviews we've done as well, there is tolerance for 1%. A 1% assessment on top of the 10% shouldn't be an undue burden. Squaw Valley Ski Holdings is prepared to fund the balance of the project's projected operating expense, and again, we're not yet asking for Placer County in this original implementation. We intend to partner closely with the county and TNT TMA, including a seat on our board, and
Keep going.
Thanks. And we will advocate for more free, frequent, and fun TART service in the region, paid for by a much larger portion of the TOT that our HOAs generate than is currently being allocated. Our HOAs are in favor of the MMTD. Local residents are in favor. Local businesses are in favor. Per our online petition, we've got 2,000 people from, that are frequent Squaw Valley Alpine Meadow visitors that are in favor, including acknowledgements that they're happy to pay 1% to help put a dent in this problem. So please judge our proposal on its own merit and let us improve transit in Squaw Valley Alpine Meadows. We will operate under a five-year sunset clause term, and we are, as attempt to answer your question, I think, Kirk, we are open to adapting to an evolving regional transit funding environment in the meantime, as warranted. We're not trying to create a little kingdom here and keep it to ourselves. We want to start something. And if a bigger mechanism that you folks, professionals, in learning how to fund and execute those processes can come, and we'd be happy to be assumed by it and operate within it and cooperate with it. But right now, we're losing out, some of my friends who are going to speak to in a moment will emphasize why we need to do this, so.
Thank you, Keith.
I guess that's it.
I think we'll let your friend speak now.
Well, I have a friend who's not here today. He's a business partner. He's flying helicopters around, putting gas x's on the ridges, and he's slacking all the cables in the tram so they can put a new counterweight on. So I have a statement here from Squaw Valley Ski Holdings, if I could read that and use another few minutes here. Dear Placer County Supervisors, this is Casey Bland, the Senior Vice President for Mountain Operations at Squaw Valley Ski Holdings. It is our pleasure at Squaw Valley Ski Holdings to pledge our support to the Intravalley Shuttle Service. We acknowledge that improvements to the transportation system in the region have been needed for decades, and Squaw Valley Ski Holdings is willing to partner and to support the concept, but to put forth funding to assist in its creation. Our intent is to improve the overall resort experience for both guests and homeowners alike. At present, the traffic situation is not truly reminiscent of a world-class mountains and community where we represent. Only by supporting a variety of approaches to improve this problem will we be able to give all who visit or live in our Squaw Valley Alpine Meadows the true service experience they want and deserve. Our intent is to continue to be an active member, excuse me, of the Micro Mass Transit District Steering Committee. He is a member of the Steering Committee right now, in its goal of forming a Tourism Business Improvement District for purposes of creating the shuttle system. We must be clear that while we are 100% in support of the effort, that we do believe that this should ultimately be a civic-based effort. That being said, we're willing to initially commit to funding the program so as to show its viability and positive effects on our mountain communities. Eventually, we would like to see this program operated, as many other resort communities are, with local agencies at the forefront. Sorry for me struggling through this. It's kind of hard to read it. Squaw Valley Ski Holdings is pleased that the supervisors of Placer County are truly considering supporting the effort to improve transportation in our communities. The homeowners and businesses are willing to make the first step in aggressively assisting in this improvement of the current transportation system with an eye toward the future. Our hope is that we are making just the first step in remedying our issues. And then we have you, supervisors, support in moving forward in a world-class experience for all. I'll send this to you as well. So thank you for hearing that. That's Casey Bland.
Thank you, Keith. Any other comments or questions on this?
Someone left the glasses.
My name is David Steppner, and I'm a permanent resident of Squaw Valley, and I'm the, sort of, homeowner representative on the council that's created the idea for the T-bid. First, let me, even though he's not here, and I support enthusiastically what he said, what Kirk said about, our real problem is 89 and traffic along 89 and the miles-long traffic jams that exist on busy weekends. And we are working with the county on trying to come up with some ingenious ways of perhaps addressing that. But this is within Squaw Valley. And so you could look at it from the point of view of, well, why would the homeowners care? Because we just have to drive down the street and park in the parking lot. Well, you may not be aware that on many busy weekends, the parking lot at Squaw Valley fills up entirely at 9:30. And therefore, if you arrive after that point, you actually can't park in the parking lot. And several times over this past ski season, people parked illegally down Squaw Valley Road, all the way almost to the intersection of Squaw Resort and Squaw Valley Road. And on some occasions, they were ticketed, and on some occasions, they were not. So anything that we could do to open up more parking spaces within the parking lot would help the business. So if we could actually get some of the residents not to take their cars down to the parking lot, but rather be shuttled down in buses, number one, it has the advantage that they don't have to get to the parking lot the first thing in the morning, otherwise they can't actually get to the ski area, number one. And number two, it would allow some more people that are parked in the parking lot, basically down 89, to get into the parking lot. So it has a business objective and result, and as well as it has a local resident result in that we could get down there, number one. And number two is, I've reached out to many of the homeowners in Squaw Valley that have mother-in-law units or rent out their homes for weekends and short-term rentals, and the fact that they would have a way to advertise their places that have shuttle service down through the resort, and you don't have to take their car down there, makes it an advantage to them. So even though we are residents, and we only, at maximum, have a two- or three-mile commute, and sometimes getting out of the parking lot in the evening may take an hour, there are advantages to us to having this. And if they have a mother-in-law unit or they're renting out their own unit on a short term, they will actually be contributing to their 1% as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Rob Olson. My wife and three young kids and are full-time residents at Alpine Meadows. I'm on the Micro Mass Transit District Steering Committee, representing Bear Creek HOA, which I'm a board member of. I presented the Micro Mass Transit District to the rest of my HOA board, to members of my HOA, in our yearly, in our yearly All Valley Meeting as well, and over the Labor Day weekend. And with a highly educated and opinionated group, there has been zero negative concern voiced to me on the current proposal, aside from when can it start? You know, regardless of people's view on growth in Tahoe, the fact is, it's a great place to be, and more people are able to visit and move here actually each year. We need more alternate modes of transportation, and this Micro Mass Transit District is a great start to aid our small, little corner of Tahoe. Personally, I've experienced over the last 10 years, the traffic that a lot of people have had. I sometimes go to work on Saturdays when I need to work, and everyone's going skiing. I see the lines. It'd be great, as Kirk was saying, if I could take a little shuttle down the hill and then jump onto TART, go into town, do stuff there. I think it benefits greater Tahoe having something like this, because it shows that Tahoe is thinking about how to use our resources well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this agenda item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Maggie Shane. As a local resident of Truckee for the last 35 years, I feel the growing impact of our visitors on busy weekends, summers, and winters. I moved here from the Bay Area and was fortunate enough to marry a little local boy, and he's seen many changes, as many who have lived here for many years. Sometimes we share this beautiful place with so many people, we feel it's impossible to leave our homes. I believe transit could help the situation. Also, I'm an owner of a condo in the village at Squaw, which is a full-time rental unit, short-term. My guests are adding to the traffic, and that could make the residents and the visitors of the valley feel the same way I do about trying to get out of their homes. I am supporting the effort to bring the shuttle service into Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows, and I'm willing to have my management company access a 1% on my guests that are staying, so that they can use the service. There is never a perfect solution to any problem, but there are always good places to start and see if it works. The flexible mechanism of funding seems to be the best solution to begin what could be termed as a full-scale pilot program for this kind of transit, locally funded and managed, reviewed annually by the stakeholders and the Board of Supervisors, and required a vote to renew in five years. In all transit systems, ridership is the key to measuring success. This could be the beginning of a great opportunity for coordinating with TART and other agencies to bring this type of transit to the region in a larger scale. What better way to market our communities than by word of mouth from a visitor that had a great time not sitting in traffic, not driving their car, and relaxing on their vacation? More visitors will come, increasing the economic well-being of our businesses and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Any other questions or comments? Please come forward. And if there's more people who want to speak on this, feel free to line up. You don't have to wait for the last speaker to finish.
My name is John Kate. I'm an owner at the Squaw Valley Lodge, and I've been a visitor to the area here for over 30 years, to the Squaw and Alpine area. I think that the MMTD proposal addresses a crying need for our area, frequent, affordable, predictable, intravalley transportation that gets cars off the roads, especially at peak periods. The proposal supplements and augments the laudable efforts of TART to provide region-wide transport, but fills in the gaps to serve a discrete area where TART is currently unable or not able to serve. The MMTD does not come close to solving all of our traffic problems, as I think one of you noted earlier, but it will help to mitigate at least one pain point, the Squaw Valley Intravalley area. As a homeowner and sometime landlord at the Squaw Valley Lodge, I believe that this will greatly enhance the experience of visitors and guests, giving them the possibility of a true car-free holiday, and giving me the opportunity to visit friends and amenities in the two valleys without having to get into my car. I've skied in mountain areas in five continents, and with the exception of Antarctica and Iran, I've not visited one area that doesn't provide local, affordable, predictable, and frequent transportation. Be it Chaminie or Valdezair, Park City, Sun Valley, Bariloche, it's possible to visit any one of these communities and enjoy the full breadth of what they offer without ever having to get into a car. Why should we be at such a competitive disadvantage? The MMTD is an important step in closing this gap. It's paid for by the people who will benefit most for it, and thus, I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring this back to the board. This was purely an informational item. We're not being asked to take any action on this today. But before we leave, are there any other questions or comments from any member of the board for Jennifer? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Much appreciated. We're going to move to Agenda Item 7. This is the Public Works and Facilities item. These are the Speedboat Beach improvements, using, among other things, park dedication fees. Andy Fisher is presenting. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Glad to be here. I want to speak this morning, this afternoon, pardon me, about the request before you today to approve the use of park dedication fees in the amount of $400,000. Couple that with a previously approved $100,000, place that into a newly created capital project account to pay for Speedboat Beach improvements. I'll talk a little bit more in a moment about where that money is coming from and going to, but a little background on the project that those funds would pay for to begin with. Speedboat Beach, one of the most beautiful beaches in all of Lake Tahoe, and of course, that's saying a lot. I think all of you are familiar with it. In the Brockway neighborhood of North Tahoe, right adjacent to the Nevada state line, the beach is in the Placer County Public Recreation Area System. But another great example of partnerships that we have up here in Tahoe, it's maintained for us under contract by the North Tahoe Public Utility District, and they take a lot of pride in their work out there. We're very happy with the work that they do for us out there. But going back a few years, after we'd had a couple of years of drought, the lake fell quite a bit, which meant there was quite a bit more beach area out there. That was about the time that social media was rising, and the beach was becoming more and more popular and more and more well-known. And at the same time, the infrastructure to get to the beach is aging, and out of those issues came a series of public meetings that we held in King's Beach, right here in this building, in late 2015 and 2016, to address those issues of infrastructure, signage, enforcement. Those meetings were intended to manage the use we already had, not intended to increase the use out there. the use out there. And your board heard the outcome of those meetings in April of 2016, and as a first phase of addressing those issues, you approved parking changes out there in the Brockway neighborhood. Those were implemented that same year, along with some parking fines, so they reconfigured the parking within the Brockway neighborhood. That helped a lot. As a gesture of appreciation, even, the residents there invited staff who worked on all that to a barbecue in the fall, because to show their pleasure. We were just really happy to hear that we had done that good job in their eyes for them. And then this, the funding that you're hearing about today, would pay for the final infrastructure improvements that came out of those workshop meetings, namely, a new restroom. Today, there are portable restrooms that are brought in in the spring and taken out in the fall. Those will be replaced with a new permanent flush restroom. The stylizing, we were able to vote on different finishes and styles in those meetings. The restroom would be consistent with what the residents there that came to those meetings voted on. Walkway improvements, the wooden stairs to get down to the beach are aging, past their prime. We would replace those with a good durable metal frame staircase that have good wooden, easily-to, easy-to-replace treads going down. Also, a landing area and a viewing area that would have some interpretive signage there. And then a new ramp over an area that kind of has some slippery rocks when they get sand on them today. So that would really improve access to the beach. And then signage, a new entry sign would be consistent with the North Tahoe Community Wayfinding Sinage Standards, so it would have the rock base, the timber frame, really tie that beach in with some of the other facilities, the identity of North Tahoe. Also, new regulatory signage. There's two different bodies of law that govern Speedboat Beach, both on the access area and then along the public trust of the beach itself, so we would want to be clear and concise on those regulations. Give good signage, so that our Sheriff's Department can enforce that with good clarity. And then finally, interpretive signage. We have one main interpretive sign that would go in the landing area, that would explain all of Speedboat Beach and its natural history and so forth, and the features there. And then a series of signs that could be rotated in and out, just for interest for people coming back and forth, talk about history, natural history, cultural history, and all the features of North Tahoe that make it great. We expect, we've been, since that April of 2016, we've been working diligently on design. We expect that to be ready for a spring 2018 construction. And then back to the money, the total project cost, $675,000 for all those infrastructure improvements. Of that, $275,000 was previously approved TOT Capital Investment Funds, similar to some of the requests that you funded earlier today, but in the previous fiscal year, those funds came to us. We began using those for design permitting, all of the upfront costs. Our intention is to leave $175,000 of those funds that had went for the permitting, that will be used for construction management, those kind of things, resided in the operating budget within Public Works. And then what we're requesting today is that we take $100,000 of those TOT funds, $400,000 in Area 1 park dedication fees. Area 1 is Marthis Valley, North Tahoe. That's a trust account that holds development fees that come in in just that area, and they're expended on projects that benefit just North Tahoe, Marthis Valley. With an expenditure of $400,000, that trust account would leave a balance of $1.87 million in it, so it's one of our healthiest accounts. So with that, I will turn it over to you for approval, to approve the $400,000 and move $500,000 into a new capital account.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions or comments from any member of the board? I see none. Any questions or comments from any member of the public? I see none. I will bring it back to the board. Motion home, second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Andy. Congratulations. It's been a long time coming. All right, next we will have Agenda Item 7B. This is the Cabin Creek Biomass Facility Update, including an update on the Department of Energy grant status. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you. Good afternoon, still, I believe. Honorable Chair and Board Members, Brett Story, Public Works and Facilities, here to provide you an update on the cabin, proposed Cabin Creek Biomass Facility. As you're aware, we've been bringing you updates all along, that staff has been able to accomplish all of the technology, the environmental, and the economic work necessary to be able to sell the, if we were able to get a power purchase agreement, we could build the facility. As you also know, the power market is at its all-time low, and we've tried methods to bring that cost down. We have some partners that have helped us in the total project, the United States Forest Service, which has helped us bring the total cost down. We're now looking at public financing, which again, could bring the cost down. The small irony of that is that we have the lowest-cost biomass, small biomass facility being designed in the country, but we have to play in the open market, and we have to battle against things like solar and wind are highly subsidized. The state of California moved forward with Assembly Bill 1122 several years ago, and they have not yet awarded a contract, but because it's only within the IOU areas, they are about to award a contract for 18 to 20 cents a kilowatt. Ours is under 10 cents a kilowatt, so we're roughly 50% of what could be awarded in the state as early as this week or next. In addition to that, for our purposes, we were able to get a Department of Energy grant, and we've been working to get to this point. The grant has the expiring date of December 31st this year. I've spoken with the Department of Energy. They believe that it's a good project. They are working through the process, and we should know by the end of this month whether they will extend the grant. Hopefully, they will. They will likely extend the grant for a year to 18 months. It just depends on what their management believes is the appropriate thing to do. We've provided them all the information necessary for that. That extension would allow us, as staff, to investigate all potential remaining opportunities to lower the price. At the moment, our technology contractor, Phoenix Energy, is finalizing the RFP bids on the technology that would be used. Once that data is known and analyzed, then we will go through the process of looking at the economic model to finally look at the determine, so that we can determine the price at which we sit, then we can look at how we can best go about trying to lower that cost even further, if possible. There are some potentials items that we can do as staff, and I believe there are some potential items that the board could do. One is, as you know, we've been looking at a low-interest loan. We believe we have a very good nexus to bring back to your board a potential loan from the Solid Waste Management Enterprise Fund, which would help us with the investment part piece and lower the price because of the low-interest loan. We're also looking at some county cost savings with the Eastern Regional, ERL has some requirements that actually chips wood and hauls it away, and that's, if we had a facility nearby, we figured out we can use that material, the specific part that comes from the forest, to go ahead and put in there. So that would save some costs, so we look at adding those cost savings, thereby potentially lowering the cost perhaps some more. There are still some state grants out there that could be used for this purpose. In fact, I've had several agency department heads come to me recently in the last couple of weeks, wanting us to apply for those. That facility actually has one of the few opportunities to actually prove greenhouse gas, lowering of greenhouse gas, so that we could provide benefits back to those funds that the state has a lot of money for. There is never any certainty with state grants, and the timing of which would send it probably fall about a year from now, before we'd know, and that's well past the deadline for us to decide, again, keeping with the DOE grant extension, should we get it. And really, the last form, we, as staff, don't believe that we could bring the price down to compete against other renewable energies, which is again, why we haven't been able to build a facility yet. So there's a potential that some sort of subsidy from other places would be needed to get the price down to be, have the ability to sell the power. And that's the extent of my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from any member of the board? Okay, I see none. Any questions from any member of the public? Okay. Brett, I did have a couple of quick questions. We are not in an IOU area here, which is the problem with getting access to those state of California funds.
In the AB 1122 program, yes.
Yes, the 1122 funds. The other funds you were referring to, are those the cap-and-trade funds for the greenhouse gas?
Yes, there's actually two, the greenhouse gas funds, cap-and-trade is one, and then there's another program that actually is looking at state, is infrastructure in the state to help situations like this. So there's two separate funds. The GHG funds has, I've forgotten the number, but they're flush with funds right now from the sales of it. The other fund was going to be renewed in January, and they estimated that it would be in the several million dollars range.
Okay. And then I know that we are having at least some discussions with Janine Wintershausen and the CCA, and I know that this item has not come to the CCA yet. I recognize that the CCA has the same concerns as a power partner in terms of pricing, but I just really want to take the opportunity to say that I think it would be a huge failure of vision of our board or the CCA if we did not figure out a way to make this move forward, because while we're comparing, you know, kilowatt-hour costs to, it's really natural gas that's killing us, not the other renewables, it does not pencil out on that pure financial basis.
That is correct.
But when we pull in air quality improvements, watershed improvements, forest improvements, reduced fire, and the jobs that will be created around this, it would just be an incredible lack of vision if our board or, and/or the CCA board or some other partner did not move forward with this. So, that's my soapbox. Anybody else want a soapbox? Kirk? Nope? Okay. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We are now going to go into closed session, and then we will come back right after closed session, and I will, Karen will bring us out of that, and then I will make a brief announcement about the reception and tomorrow.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss two items, one under pending litigation, the case of California Community Clean Energy versus County, and one under anticipated litigation.
And are we adjourning to the small room?
Yeah.
Okay.
The board has met in closed session, and on the item of pending litigation, that's the California Clean Energy Committee versus County, the board has provided direction. On the anticipated litigation matter, the board has also provided direction. That concludes the report out for closed session.
Thank you. Having completed the items for today's board meeting, we are going to adjourn to a reception on Monday, October 23rd, 2017, immediately after this board meeting. We will adjourn to the next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 24th, 2017, which will be held at 175 Full Wyler Avenue, Auburn, California, 95603, otherwise known as the domes.